Okay, you're all set. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Okay, welcome ladies and gentlemen to the November 19th, 2020, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. This meeting is being recorded and transmitted by the town of Barnstable and is being broadcast over channel 18 of the Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. If anyone is planning to make an audio or video recording or transmit the meeting, they are required to notify the chair before doing so. Thank you very, very much. So, Madam Clerk is not here, but Lynn, you're willing to do the roll call for us?
Yes, thank you. Nick Atzlis?
President.
David Bogan?
Present.
Christine Clark?
Here.
Jennifer Cullum? Counselor Cullum? Okay.
She's absent for this evening.
Okay. Deborah Dagwan?
She may be absent. She's out of town. She said she tried to connect, but right now she's not here.
Okay. Vice President Rap Grissette?
Present.
President Hebert?
Present. President.
Counselor Levesque, thank you. Counselor Schnep?
Here.
I'm sorry, I missed Counselor Neary?
Here.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Here.
Counselor Starr? Counselor Starr?
I think he's frozen.
He's frozen.
Looks like he's frozen.
Counselor Steinheber?
Here.
Okay, you have 11 in attendance.
Thank you very much, Lynn, for that. Our councilors stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead us in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, councilors. Now I have our moment of silence, and Counselor Steinheber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we remember longtime Barnstable resident Fran Manzelli, who passed away today after a several months' battle with cancer, fought that pretty bravely. Fran was very active in the community with the West Barnstable Civic Association. He served as the Republican State Committee man for the Cape and Islands for a number of years, was president of the Cape Cod Republican Club for many, many more years. Fran was a former educator and a principal. And I ask that you keep him and his wife Jane and his family in your thoughts tonight.
Thank you very much. And thank you all. We will now enter for public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment, Lynn or Sarah?
Yes, we do. We'll get someone over right away.
Thank you.
Hi, Joanne. Now's your chance for public comment. If you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joanne Ackman. I live in Centerville, and I'm a member of the Centerville Concerned Citizens. First, I'd like to say welcome to our newly-elected precinct for Town Councilor Nick Atzlis. I want to address the news that the town of Barnstable will not appeal to lower court ruling in the T-Mobile lawsuit regarding the cell tower at the South Congregational Church on Main Street in Centerville. The town has executed a regulatory agreement and has reinstated the building permit to allow T-Mobile to complete construction on the tower. It's devastating to learn our leaders are ready to take and impose a risk not fully assessed onto its residents. Counselor Atzlis, I was pleased to read your comments on this matter in the Cape Cod Times prior to the election. The idea of communicating with church leadership is a good one, and many of the CCC leadership support this and are willing to help in any way. While members of CCC continue talks with our legal team, we have asked Counselor Atzlis to be present during the final inspection of the tower. He has assured us he will be available to participate in the project. We thank him for his immediate concern and willingness to hit the ground running on this critically important issue facing the village of Centerville. For those folks who find our concerns without merit, please consider these three items. The city of Boston recently filed a letter with the FCC stating "radio frequency devices, wireless in particular, have proliferated since the last rules and standards were determined in 1996." The Boston Commission took notice, too, of how the deployment of these devices grows even closer to humans. They stated, "The city of Boston believes that the concerns of the public are real and that the FCC has done it a service to itself, local governments, and the consumer." Number two, in 2018, the U.S. National Toxicology Program released its findings from a 16-year, $30 million study on wireless radiation. The scientists went in expecting to find no evidence of harm. In their peer-reviewed findings, they found statistically significant evidence of harm. DNA damage, brain and heart tumors were just the tip of the iceberg. Number three, on November 1st of this year, the New Hampshire Legislature released their groundbreaking final report that studied the environmental and health effects of EMFs and evolving 5G technology. They compiled 15 recommendations to inform and protect the public. The report reveals great evidence of harm and cites the failure of industry and government agencies to protect the public. In closing, I implore the members of the South Congregational Church to please listen to the scientists on this issue. The industry will let you know, will tell you what you want to hear, but scientists will share their unbiased findings. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say one more thing completely away from the subject. The Board of Health, I believe the young woman's name is Diana Belair, has been instrumental in providing information to the small businesses through email in regard to guidance from the governor's office, and for that, I am very grateful. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, next up is Pete Sampo. Mr. Sampo, you may unmute. This is your turn for public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. As you know, I'm Pete Sampo. I have a PhD in a global science, and I'm a decades-long member of the Union of Concerned Scientists. I used to teach atmospheric chemistry and global carbon cycling at the university level down in Maryland. You know me now as a teacher at Sturgis Charter Public School, and I teach there a class Environmental Systems and Society. Additionally, I serve the town as an active participant for the wise management of our natural resources. You are all aware of the global climate issue facing our planet this century. I hope you realize that science has been clear for 40 years. The concern is real. Humanity must respond aggressively to the threat of climate change as soon as possible. Too much time really has already been lost. The Climate Resolution, sponsored by Counselor Starr, Starr has hopefully, is supported by the majority of you, is a needed step for our municipality to do our part in bringing more sustainable future to the generations to come. I trust you all understand the severity of the threat this poses to our community and future generations, and I want for you to do the right thing later this evening when you vote to adopt item 2021-045. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak respectfully to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sampo.
Next is Rob Wilson. Rob, you can unmute.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. My name is Rob Wilson. I live at 197 Old Thalmouth Road in Martins Mills. I'm here tonight to inform about noncompliance of zoning variance 2009-025 and 2020-025. Cape Resources at 280 Old Thalmouth Road is in my ears, a noncompliance with the zoning variance. My last communication from the town was that the 2009 variance was not even reported. One of the conditions of the 2009 variance was that they would submit noise and order logs to the town. I made FOIA requests to the town, and none were found. I followed up with various emails, and the result was the previously mentioned email about not being mentioned, and in fact, there were none unfiled. Since I found out about the variance, I have registered various complaints about noise and hours of operation. They have worked past five, and on Sundays, which is not allowed by the variance. In addition, they are operating equipment that is like living on a continuous surface. I've sent an email to the town attorney through the central email address, and I've yet to get any response. In my view, they are noncompliant with their variance on a number of points. I would like the town to enforce the condition of the variance so that as I retire, I can live in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm just going to ask if everybody else heard what Rob said. A lot of it was muffled here, so I'm just hoping that everybody's got the drift of what he said so we can respond appropriately. Nobody's indicating they had trouble? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Counselor Neary?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. President. What property was that? I could not make out the property. What property are we talking about?
It's 280 Old Thalmouth Road.
Where do you old Thalmouth Road? Thank you.
Cape Resources.
Thank you. Thank you again, Rob.
All right, next for public comment is Steve Seymour. Steve, if you could unmute. Now's your chance to speak. You have three minutes.
You're unmuted. Yeah, okay. Yeah, hi, Steve Seymour. My property abuts the Falcon Road property, which is item number 2021-023 on tonight's agenda. I'm requesting the town council vote for the property transfer with no amendments to the conservation restriction as published. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, also, Susan Phelan's going to make a comment here, too.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Oh, can you hear me?
You can. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sue Phelan, a resident of Plum Street also for over 30 years. I believe I can speak for many of my neighbors and other town residents who travel the paths and trailways that abut Plum Street behind Plum Street, that we are generally in support of item 2021-023, the transfer and appropriation for this property. The preservation of this property would advance the open space and passive recreation goals and objectives of the town of Barnstable. Very recently, yesterday as a matter of fact, we were provided clarification about the provisions contained in the conservation restriction. And if the conservation restriction is voted on tonight and the property transfer, as it's written and as it's published on the town of Barnstable website, we'd be very gratified that the town of Barnstable and other involved properties have heard our concerns and acted to allay any misgivings that we have about this property transfer. We trust you will vote for the appropriation and the transfer order tonight with no further changes to the conservation restriction. Thank you.
Excuse me, President Hebert. If I may, will there be an opportunity for others to speak during the public hearing of that item?
Yeah, other people can speak to public hearing. Yeah.
During the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing public comment just now. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Up next is Martin McNally. Martin, you have public, if you can unmute, it's your turn to speak.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I would like to start my public comment tonight with a statement that was made by Counselor Steinheber at the November 5th Town Council meeting. And I quote, "We are failing the people. I could not agree more with the counselor's words. Can someone please explain to the public how the short-term rental issue, after contributions of time and effort by so many people, be tossed aside and ultimately withdrawn by a vote of the council? I do not want to be disrespectful to any counselor, as I do believe it's much easier to be sitting in my position than it is in yours. However, I do feel it is time for some direct counselor comments based on the results of the November 5th meeting. First, Counselor Dagwan, what other information could you possibly need that has not already been given to you by the council, the town staff, or the public itself in order for you to make a reasonable and intelligent decision on this matter? Sending this issue back to committee for a do-over would be a complete waste of time and effort for all those involved for over the last 18 months." Next, Counselor Bogan. "I consider your position on short-term rentals to be extremely restrictive. You continue to indicate that you have trended towards the middle on many of the STR issues, but from my perspective, your position has changed very little over the past year. You indicate that the majority of your constituents are in favor of protecting neighborhoods from STRs, but at the November 5th meeting, the majority of public comment was from STR owners in your precinct who are all in favor of their continued use. Something isn't adding up with your position or who you're actually representing." Lastly, Counselor President Hebert. "It is your job to lead, not to speak for the entire council, but lead the council from the beginning of an issue to its conclusion. Without direction, the council will continue to accomplish what it did on November 5th, which is nothing, absolutely nothing. You also spoke that night of an STR in Centerville that was reportedly overcrowded with intoxicated individuals. Then you proceeded to support the vote to withdraw the very ordinance that was specifically designed by the hard work of many people to deal with exactly this type of issue. What kind of leadership is that? Finally, to all the councilors, you have treated the potential passing of the STR ordinance like an act of Congress, knowing full well that this ordinance can be changed on a monthly basis if needed. From what I can see, the major sticking points have to do with type of ownership..."
You have 30 seconds.
"...length of stay, and the 1,500 STR cap. Why couldn't the other parts of the regulation, such as maximum occupancy, trash removal, enforcement penalties, and responsible party be approved to provide neighborhoods with the appropriate relief from the few problem STRs that may or may not currently exist? I would also expect that others besides myself, such as representatives of the Barnstable Watch Group, would also agree that some neighborhood protection is better than none at all. Thank you very much for your time."
Thank you, Mr. McNally.
Next is Jane Ward. Jane, if you could unmute. Now's your chance to speak.
Hi, thank you very much. I would like to comment in support of declaring a climate emergency. I'm a Air Force Colonel retired, served for 26 years as a physician and educator, and moved to Centerville in 2017. As a clinician educator, my career was grounded in science, and I was dedicated to serving my fellow citizens and my country and promote health. We can't have clean health without environmental health. At the rate of climate change, we will have neither of these shortly. Climate change is an existential threat to both our national security and to human health. It's also an emergency. Emergencies are declared, not to scare people, but to combat the threat or respond to an outcome by allowing governments and groups to gather resources and plans. Declaring a state of emergency activates support and resources from various levels of government. An emergency declare demands action. As Greta Thunberg and many of our youth and young speakers this evening will tell us, we need to act now to protect their future. I just want to point out that national security has been threatened by climate change and recognized by our top military planners as a major threat to national security since at least the 1980s. It's been in the military planning doctrine, and there's currently a group of retired four-star generals and admirals preparing to brief the incoming administration and ask them to prioritize climate change as one of our number-one national security issues. It's a security issue not only because of sea level rise and severe weather-threatening basis, but also perhaps an even greater threat is that climate change becomes a threat multiplier, making every other destabilizing influence in the international and international stage more risky due to displaced populations, civil wars, threatened by drought, starvation, increasing in disease rates. Human health is threatened by climate change as the number recognized by all major national and international health organizations, such as the World Health Organization, the American Medical Association, American Public Health Association, and others. In fact, our current COVID pandemic is an example of increased disease that has a relationship to climate change, with increased air pollution, individuals that are struck by the COVID pandemic...
You have 30 seconds.
...outcome. I hope that the Barnstable Town Council will embrace the declaration of a climate change as an emergency and allow that status to inform every future aspect of town planning, building, operation, and maintenance of our common entities, such as buildings, roads, transportation, water, and energy systems. Thank you.
Jane, thank you very much, and thank you for your service through our country.
Thank you.
Next for public comment is Michelle. Michelle, now's your chance to speak. If you would unmute, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Scarlet, and I live in Centerville. I am a member of the Barnstable Climate Action Network and the Faith Communities Environmental Network. It is from this latter group I wish to speak tonight. The Faith Communities Environmental Network has 33 faith and spiritual communities that share a reverence for all of creation and a desire, a moral obligation, to look out for the next generation. Some traditions are taught to make decisions for the seventh generation, and for us now, that would be the year 2229. As the quote states, "We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors; we borrow it from our children." This climate emergency declaration is asking the town to look through an environmental lens that addresses the fierce urgency of now in the long-term view. We need to make earth-friendly, green public policies to safeguard this beautiful Cape Cod we call home for our children, our grandchildren, and their children. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Michelle. Thank you.
Next, we have Grove Harris. Grove, you may unmute and give your public comment now.
Thank you. My name is Grove Harris, and I own a home over in West Hyannis Port. I've been on the Cape for summers since I was six years old, and now it's my primary residence. I speak to you tonight in support of this climate emergency declaration. I do some work with teenagers who are wondering why I didn't work for Action sooner, and they all talk to me about how this is just a common-sense-done-deal to think about how we need to start to work together in all sorts of ways to protect our vulnerable home here. This ordinance is written with very commonsensical language. It talks about earliest technologically and economically feasible time, necessary and prudent, coordinated efforts, empowered to engage proactively by engaging citizens, business, and other constituents. This is calm, moderate language that is needed for us to move really far forward as soon as we can for what most of the world knows as an emergency. All our fishermen know that the fish have moved north and the lobsters, it's too warm for them to stick around now in the winter months. This is just a general knowledge that we face a very volatile-changing situation, and we need to prudently come together now to address it as evenly and consistently and thoroughly as we can. So, I really hope that this town will embrace this climate declaration of an emergency situation with the other towns on Cape Cod, and let us all start to turn together, look forward, and make some changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. Thank you.
Next up for public comment, sorry Lynn, is Keith. Keith, now's your chance to speak. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Keith Lewison. I'm a resident of Sandwich, but I teach here in Barnstable at Cape Cod Academy, where I work with students in grades 7 to 12. I'm also a volunteer with Sierra Club on Cape Cod. In those capacities, I've worked with numerous students across the Cape, but particularly in the town of Barnstable. And what I want to do tonight is speak on their behalf in support of the greenhouse gas reduction proposal for the town of Barnstable. Like the last speaker said, young people do not see this as a divisive or partisan issue. They see this as an urgent issue that the adults need to solve for them because youth will be disproportionately harmed by the effects of climate change, and yet they have no voice in making decisions that put them in this situation. So, I'd like to use my voice tonight to speak on their behalf to say that this is urgent and necessary. It's a well-written resolution that will help guide the town of Barnstable and hopefully lead other towns in the Cape in that direction as well. So, thank you for your time, and I hope it passes.
Keith, thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for teaching the future. Thanks.
Next, we have Jay Cornwall. Jay, if you want to unmute yourself, and you can speak.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Good evening. I'm Jay Cornwall. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name, Jay Cornwall again. I'm a 7th grader at Cape Cod Academy, and I'm here tonight to urge you to support the proposal to reduce Barnstable greenhouse gas emissions in order to fight global climate change. I'm sincerely concerned about climate change because of two key reasons, which is sea level rise and the potential for increased severity of tropical storms. I have firsthand experience of these storms, and it caused a lot of damage to my house and to our neighborhoods in the form of flooding in our basement and twigs and trees around the road. And I am afraid to wonder what would happen if we have something bigger than the small hurricane that we had that could have been potentially formed by global climate change. Now, sea level rise is a bit different. It will affect our beaches, our homes, our rental properties, and our marinas. And that is a big deal because that also affects our economy. Now, since our economy is based mostly off of tourism and millions of tourists come here, it is very important that our beaches remain there because that is where our source of income comes from, most people. And again, since your decision on this matter will affect my life and the future generations to come, I urge you to vote in favor of this document. Please do, because I am going to be on this earth for probably like 70 more years, and there's going to be more generations to come there. And this decision will greatly, greatly impact all of these lives. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cornwall, and hopefully you're here for a lot more than 70 years, and it was a pleasure to have you come and talk to us, and I hope you come back again, okay? Good luck at school. Thanks, Jay.
Thanks.
Next, we have Alan Sunderland. Alan, if you want to unmute, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Alan Sunderland, and I'm a 7th grader at Cape Cod Academy. I'm here tonight to urge you to support the proposal to reduce Barnstable greenhouse gas emissions in order to fight climate change. I am very concerned about climate change because just a couple months ago... I am very concerned about climate change because just a couple of months ago, there was a storm and the water came up about 20 feet more than usual. This was on a road called Navigation Road that is less than a half a mile away from my house. So in the matter of decades, my house could be underwater even though that doesn't seem possible today. This would be very bad if my house went underwater because then all my belongings would have been destroyed and most of all, I would not have a house to live in and I and have a bed to sleep in or to watch TV or even to eat. In some parts of the U.S., this has already happened to some kids' houses due to more powerful storms. This is why I want to want the town to take action to stop climate change. Action is needed now before it is too late and I hope Barnstable will be a leader in fighting climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sunderland, for speaking with us tonight and bringing your thoughts forward. We hope to see you again sometime. Good luck in school and thanks again, Alan, for being with us.
Thank you.
Next up for public comment is Chuck Tuttle. Chuck, if you want to unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Hello, town councilors, and welcome to the new members of the town council. Thank you all for your service to the town. In November 2019, about a year ago, the town of Barnstable entered into an agreement to purchase the residential property located at 310 Main Street in Centerville for the purpose of citing a wastewater pump station. Once the residents of the town, in particular, the folks here in Centerville, learned of this pending purchase of a single-family home for municipal wastewater management purposes, the reaction was swift and clear. People were upset. On November 20th, 2019, we had a public meeting at the recreation building on Main Street here in Centerville. Hundreds of people were in attendance and they voiced their concern with vigor. Subsequently, and to their credit, the powers that be at the town level agreed to continue the search for a more suitable site for the wastewater pump. At that point, a commitment was made. If a preferable site was found, the town would divest itself of the property at 310 Main Street and it would be returned to the market to be used as a single-family home. The target date for returning 310 Main Street to the open market was, quote, "about a year", which puts us at December 2020. It is my understanding that a more suitable site has been identified, which the DPW is pursuing. I am told that a portion of Mother's Park Road, not Mother's Park, but the road that runs behind it, which is a county road, has been identified as the preferable site. I understand it will take some time to get permission from the county in order to use a section of that road for the pump and that the DPW and perhaps the town attorneys are already working on securing that permission. Also, this may result in additional parking spaces for Mother's Park, which would be great. Lots of benefits here on several levels. In summary, I am here simply to remind the town council and the powers that be at the town level that the commitment to return 310 Main Street to the market to be used as a single-family home is greatly appreciated and that the target date of December 2020 is upon us. It would be great to get an update on the progress of securing permission from the county to use Mother's Park Road for the site as the site for the wastewater pump station on Main Street in Centerville. Thank you for your time and attention and your good work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tuttle.
Next up for public comment is, oh, Chimey? I'll get it right one of these days. I apologize. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, I hope everyone is doing well. My name is Chimey Pelzum and I am now a Barnstable alumni. I'm speaking for the Barnstable Climate Action Network, which is pushing for the town of Barnstable to declare a climate emergency, which acknowledges that we're in the middle of a climate crisis and we will work towards minimizing our carbon emissions. This process will take up time and the results will only show with even more time. But the most important thing is to take the first step in this long process and work together. As a student, my biggest everyday worries haven't always been focused on the environment. But Barnstable High School played a huge role in shaping my interests and I know that a lot of other students feel the same way. And as I've gone older, I see how important it is to take care of what we have and not only as the youth, but as a community, we need to acknowledge this problem. And the Cape is known for its beautiful beaches and as residents, we should do as much as we can to preserve those beautiful beaches on a local level. Small things like beach cleanups can be done by individuals, but bigger ideas like putting solar arrays across Barnstable would need the support from this declaration. So I think the other speakers were very clear when saying that this is a very real problem. And so I hope you all take into consideration what take into consideration what I've said and adopt the climate emergency declaration for the town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you, Chimey, for speaking with us. We greatly appreciate it. Keep up your good work in school and you're going to have a bright future and I think you might have something to say about the environment for a long time to come. So thanks again, Chimey.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Wolfe. Jim, now's your chance to speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Jim Wolfe here. I am the Sustainability Director at Cape Air. We've been in Barnstable for 32 years and I also happen to be a member of the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative and I'm serving sort of as a youth liaison on that group. And I got to say, it's great to hear all these young voices. Also, thank you, Barnstable Town Council, for saving a lot of fuel by having this meeting this way and allowing us to have our dinner and then talk to you. I have a little bit different take on this for a town. First of all, passing this resolution, I believe, is the first step to making lots of good news in Barnstable. And why do I say the first step? My own experience at the company that's born and bred in Barnstable is, you know, informing me. In 2009, Cape Air took a similar step and we didn't know at the time exactly where it would lead us, both financially or in any other way. I can tell you that it was this step, this resolution step, that got us going. We resolved to do everything we could to mitigate our impact on global climate change and obviously, yes, airlines like ours traditionally burn a lot of fossil fuel to carry out our mission. So beginning with the installation of our first solar PV installation, which was 2010, it was the third largest in Massachusetts at the time, and it was at the airport and continuing up today with our plans to be flying fully electric out of Barnstable Airport by the middle of this decade. We've had one success after another and we've worked serious and various projects to reduce our carbon burn. And when I say successes, I mean that not only have we become greener and greener environmentally speaking as we pursued what we call our sustainability initiative, but each and every project we've undertaken has made us leaner and leaner by reducing the cost of energy in our operations. So what I'm saying is green can be green, which is important in tough economic times and what's coming and for a town. It's a saving grace of adopting this resolution.
You do have 20 seconds.
Okay, we've learned that there's nothing to fear by evaluating all our business decisions within a framework that includes carbon reduction goals that we set for ourselves. This is allowing us to invest in the newest technologies. And as I said, this is a first step. If our town council adopts this resolution, it will generate many actions that will be good for the good for the citizens. Thank you very much and I hope you can pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim, and we look forward to seeing those electric planes in the sky. Thank you.
Next up for public comment is Greta Nelson. Greta, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Hi, all. Thank you, councilors. My name is Greta Nelson. I'm a resident of West Barnstable and a student of Environmental Studies at Vassar College. I've also recently been working with the Barnstable Climate Action Network. I am also here to urge the council to pass the climate emergency resolution for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions up for vote tonight. It is well past time that we commit to doing our part to mitigate, adapt, and reverse the impacts of the climate and ecological emergency. I wanted to share with you all a quote from renowned climate reporter Naomi Klein, a favorite author of mine, who says that "When attempting to tackle climate change head-on, the goal becomes not to build a few gigantic green solutions, but to infinitely multiply smaller ones." And this is exactly what the climate resolution in Barnstable can do alongside the declarations from all of the other towns. As a young person, I suppose in some sense it's my duty to appeal to your sense of hope. These days, hope for the future is hard to come by. I'll admit that the uncertainty and volatility that I see looking forward towards a future of climate disruption is nagging in the best of times and crushing in the worst. It is a reality that I think about and see around me every day and it is not an option not to address it. However, I would like to say that commitments like the one that I hope you will make tonight are my biggest source of hope. Small groups can make tangible change and then we can multiply it infinitely. I've committed my studies and my work to this idea and I ask that tonight you help our town commit to this goal as well. Please consider the gravity of the human this human-driven ecological crisis, the vulnerability of Cape Cod and those who live here, but more importantly, I want you to consider the opportunity that you have to create hope and what sort of potential a dose of hope can unleash and please pass the climate resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nelson. We do have hope, but we also have faith in you and your generation. Thank you very much. Good luck in school, Greta. Thank you.
Next for public comment is Bobby Two. Bobby, if you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Bobby. Thank you.
Hi. I just want to, yeah, I'm keeping my video off. I just want to express my support for the purchase of the land around the Falcon Road area. I have, I live on Plum Street. My parents actually bought Plum Street about 60 years ago, the property that I'm I now own, and so I do consider that to be my home. My concern is that there's going to be hunting allowed in this bucolic and beautiful residential area. Can you clarify that?
Bobby, they will respond to you after a public comment that we, the council will respond. But is that what you wanted to say, Bobby?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
Bobby, do you have more that you'd like to talk to us about first?
No, I really just want to express my concern and I kind of want to be reassured that the residents of Plum Street don't have to worry about hunting, you know, within in.
Yeah, yeah. There can be no, there can be no hunting near homes. That's against the law, against the rules and so I think you should feel very safe, very safe.
Okay, so there'll be no hunting allowed. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Bobby. Thank you.
Next up is Gloria Gilbert. Gloria, you can unmute. It's your turn for public comment.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Gloria.
Well, good evening to the town council. My name's Gloria Gilbert and I'm a taxpayer in West Barnstable contiguous to the 28 Falcon Road parcel. And I had called in a couple of weeks ago to voice my concerns about the wording in the CR and regarding hunting. And I know that you have now prohibited distinctly hunting for the future use of that parcel. And I just wanted to call in and thank you very much for listening to the constituents and greatly appreciate that you did the tedious task of wordsmithing, but it means a great deal to us. So I just wanted to thank you for listening to us. Okay?
Okay, Gloria. Thank you very much. If you got any smiles from us, it's because you're you're on the on the screen here on the side.
Oh, I know. I'm sorry.
Enlighten the mood. Thank you. There you are. Okay.
There you go. Sorry.
Yes, I think I spoke correctly, but if I did miss, if I said anything that was incorrect about hunting, I'm sure that it would be corrected at response to public comment.
Okay. Thanks so much. Have a great. Thank you.
That is the end of public comment via Zoom.
All right, everybody, thank you very much. Counselors, respond to public comment. Counselors. Counselor Bogan, please. Counselor Bogan?
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. First of all, I did want to acknowledge Mr. Wilson because as the liaison to the Attorney Board of Appeals, I was there for a meeting last night and he did present himself and express his concern with respect to non-compliance with the variance last evening and was told that he should direct his comments to the council. So hopefully our town manager and his staff will will look into that issue for them. I think I can probably express the sentiment of my brother and sister counselors with respect to the passion displayed by those speaking on behalf of the climate initiative and particularly commend Messrs. Cornwall, Sunderland, and Ms. Nelson. I wish I could have been nearly as articulate when I was there. Finally, with regard to Mr. McDealy, I won't go through the substance, but you know, I've heard any number of times references to our leadership. I will only say, leadership takes many forms and I for one commend the leadership of this council, not only with regard to short-term, but all of the things that come before the council. I think I can think of no better hands with this council. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Stark, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Hebert. I also would like to reflect what Mr. Bogan said. Thank, I would thank everybody for making their comments, especially the young high school students and college students. It's heartwarming to have them here and I hope they come back and join us again. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Councilor President Hebert. I do echo Counselor Bogan and Star about the need for some folks in our community to step up to participate in our government and speaking so articulately. And I would like to also congratulate our town staff for working with the concerned citizens on Plum Street to acknowledge their concerns and to, as the comment was made, wordsmithing to make sure that the language would ensure no hunting on the property before it's turned.
Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I wanted to address the Centerville concerned citizens and I just want to continue to reassure you that I share all of your concerns with regard to 5G. And I want to thank you for being persistent and continuing to raise the issue. I think it's a very important issue. It's an issue that Europe has been tackling with, the United States is beginning to, but I think I just appreciate the fact that you continue to bring it forward. I want to commend and let the young people who spoke tonight regarding emergency resolution on climate change. I'm so proud of you. Your voices are very important voices, I think, for our citizens to hear. You speak with so much passion and I want you to know that for me, climate change, protecting the environment, became an issue when I too was about your age. However, this was in 1984. In 1994, having graduated with a degree in biology, my goal was to get a master's in environmental conservation. So I want all of you to know that I am very much with you and behind your cause and I also appreciate the scientists who stepped forward to speak. my goal was to get a master's in environmental conservation. So I want all of you to know that I am very much with you and behind your cause. And I also appreciate the scientists who stepped forward to speak, as well as Jane Ward also speaking on behalf of what's happening in the military, but also Jim Wolfe for speaking in terms of the economic benefits of this. So I appreciate all of you taking your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I would invite Town Manager Else, if you... Please, if you could... Do you want to reply to anything on the T-Mobile or the 310 Main or the hunting?
I would defer to your fellow council... I think Paula Schnep had her hand up, and I certainly will answer any questions, President Hebert, at the end.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I missed that. Councilor Schnep, you had your hand up. I'm sorry I missed that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo my fellow counselors in thanking the members of the public to come out tonight, sharing their concerns about many issues that are important to our community. And the fact that the Climate Change Resolution brought out such a fabulous intergenerational response is just... is great. And I just want to let you know that I will be supporting that as we get to that at the end of our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wholeheartedly appreciate many people have spoken on the item that will be coming up later tonight. With that, though, I would also like to state that in the period of time that I've been involved in Town Council, it has become extremely clear to me that we are fortunate, not only with the leadership of the Town Manager, but also the leadership of the directors under his supervision, such as, you know, Dan Santos and DPW. I understand what the... maybe the thoughts are with this resolution. But I think upon further inspection and review, we're already doing this. We are fortunate to have a town that actually really has taken a leadership role in terms of efficiency, greenhouse, just the green thought process involved in almost all facets of our town. And I just find it... It's a two-way story. To me, there are parts of it that's more or less a feel-good type of approach to this type of a resolution. And with that being said, it can also come with caveats at the end that we can't anticipate upfront. I can tell you this: We lead in water resources. We lead in water conservation. We lead in water treatment. We lead in, you know, solar arrays. I mean, all of these things occur on a day-to-day basis. And I think as this meeting will go on, you know, we're going to bring out the strategic plan of the town. And these tenants are inherently built into the strategic plan of our town. I find it a little bit disingenuous because it kind of implies like we aren't watching the ball. We aren't paying attention to what we're already doing. And as a town goes, we're leading the race here. We're out in front of this. The caveat being is, you know, does it become a tripping point in terms of enacting or making decisions going forward? I am confident that the staff of the town looks at these items wholeheartedly and in a holistic approach to bolster resiliency, all these matters. And I understand the passion. Please, I understand it. There's just a part of me that feels that this is just a restatement of what we're already doing in our mission statement. And that is... that's my point. And I appreciate all of the commentary that we've heard through public comment. The reason why I make mention of this now is that by the time we get to it, it could be 11 o'clock at night or whatever, or midnight. And I just... that's just my thoughts. And again, I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other counselors? Other counselors? So then I will speak up.
Counselor Clark has a comment.
Counselor Clark, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Senator Counselor, uh, Council President Hebert, I was given two letters of support for the Falcon Road purchase. Do you read it into the record? Am I correct to assume I can do that? Any of the items is having the public hearing?
So you have two letters, and it has to do with one of the items?
Three items. There's a public hearing on the Falcon Road purchase. So may I read it into the record at that time? I just wanted to...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I would just love having the students. Thank you for taking the time to talk with us this evening on the climate. They're very important. And to Mr. McNally on the leadership, I have appreciated every time I've heard him speak. He's contributed to the discussion on the SDRs. And when you talk about leadership, I just want to be supportive of every counselor who has participated and worked and done their due diligence and spoke from the heart and from the mind. And I don't feel like we have failed. I believe that we, as a council, individually and together, really made the statement, we will not fail the public. And that's what this has been all about. There were more amendments that wanted to go on in the last night that we spoke. I honor and respect the leadership of Counselor Schnep, who made a decision that it was time to pause. We have lost no time. We are talking with the leadership and with the town to make sure that we come up with a plan that is right for our town. And so we continue to gather information. It's complex. It appears very, very simple at first, but it is complex. And if we make a wrong mistake, many of our citizens will take the wrong approach and say that we did a very bad job, and it's going to come into a disaster. We do not want a disaster. Takes a little longer to get it right and for the best service of our community. That's what we're going to do. My job, again, was to make sure that no counselor's comments, thoughts, and ideas was left behind. And I have made a list of every contribution that every counselor has made and continued to make. And I don't take it lightly. And I applaud the counselors for your dedication and a very, very complex item. So I thank Mr. McNally for his comments, but we are going to get it right. Thank you. Any other counselors? So seeing none, I would ask if the Town Manager has any comment to the public.
Good evening, Mark Else, Town Manager. Relevant to public comment, I've already referred and spoken with the Building Commissioner about 280 Old Falmouth Road, and he is proceeding with investigating and taking appropriate action. Relevant to Falcon Road. In the current CR, there is a prohibition for hunting on that parcel, and it is attached to your agenda this evening. Relevant to 310 Main Street. I think that Mr. Tuttle did outline exactly the actions that are being taken. I'm not positive about the timeline from the standpoint of we were not intending to put back or actually refer that asset, 310 Main Street, to the Town Council Subcommittee for Assets, who ultimately advise us, and then we proceed with taking action relevant to an asset. We weren't planning on proceeding with that action until we secured the positive vote from the Town Council relevant to citing a pump station on what is now Mother's Park Road. So that will involve closing Mother's Park Road. That will involve making sure that we have clear title on Mother's Park Road because we are not eligible for SRF grant money unless we have clear title on the parcels for which we are citing assets. So once we go through every single piece of securing the ability to put a pump station within that roadway, we'll refer 310 Main Street to the Town Council Subcommittee on Asset Management. From that committee will come out a recommendation for what we do with that parcel. This is standard. This is what we do with our asset. And then from there, we will proceed with that action. So that's how this will unfold. We are progressing exactly the way that Mr. Tuttle portrayed it, though. We are... We feel good at the preliminary level that we will be able to cite the pump station there, barring any of the, you know, future decisions and positive votes from the Town Council relevant to doing this. And certainly, the council will be engaged when we refer this back to the county, when we abandon this road, when we ask for design permit and construction money. And all those things will be... need to be in place. We have also received comment that people don't want it in Mother's Park. So I don't know if that also refers to Mother's Park Road. So I never assumed that when it comes before our public that it is a done deal until every aspect has been voted upon, and then we can proceed with said action. Finally, in my Town Manager report, I did address the communications that I have been receiving from the concerned citizens of Centerville and subsequently from individual residents in the community. So I'm going to read item number five, and when I do my Town Manager report, I'm going to skip item number five. Actually, it's number four in your report because I've added one because late in the day, the Superintendent of Schools provided me with some information. So I wanted to make sure I included it in my report. So sorry for the numbering change, but it's number five now in my report. On October 26, the U.S. District Court issued an order and judgment in the T-Mobile matter ordering the town of Barnstable to issue T-Mobile all permits and permits necessary to conduct the installation and operation of the personal wireless facility located at the South Congregational Church in Centerville and to execute the regulatory agreement that was attached to the order by November 5. I executed the regulatory agreement and the Building Commissioner... I'm sorry, reissued the required permits. I've received numerous communications from residents expressing their disappointment that the town is taking this action. I want to reiterate that the town proceeded as directed by court order. We continue our discussion in review of the next steps the town may take to maximize local control consistent with the federal law, including updating our town ordinances and procedures with respect to telecom permitting. I've actually reached out to experts in the field, and we are taking our ordinances and other regulatory authority under review. But I can tell you, as outlined actually by the concerned citizens, it's a national issue. This is federally regulated. And many of these efforts, though long in duration, have been slow to yield change. The authority falls with our federal government and the FCC. We cannot exceed our authority as a community. We can certainly do everything possible to protect the health and safety of our residents and protect the quality of life and character of our community. And that's what the town of Barnstable is doing. With the passage of a resolve by Town Council at your last meeting, authorizing the Town Manager to file with the Federal Communications Commission, the town has communicated its dissent to the comments filed in June by the City of Boston regarding radio frequency emission standards, essentially signing on to the city's request that the FCC reexamine those standards. So what was pointed out as an effort by the City of Boston, we were aware of. We identified. We came to our Town Council and asked for authority, and we have proceeded in doing that. I will reinforce our earlier suggestions that communication by our citizens with our federal delegation is critical in modifying the FCC regulation. Without that, we will have very little ability to impact what is occurring. We can continue to try, but we also need an effort by our citizens focused at that level. We will continue to work with our community, prioritizing public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Else. Thank you for that... those comments. And one more time, any of the counselors want to respond to public comment? Did anyone? No. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment at this time. Thank you very much to the public. Thank you to the counselors for your responses. We will now have Town Managers' communications, please, Town Manager.
Good evening, Mark Else, Town Manager. This is my Town Manager's update for the period of November 6 through November 19. And I'm going to ask that Mark Milne, our Director of Finance, provide us with an update on revaluation and the revaluation process. And I know he has our Director of Assessing, Ed O'Neill, with him. So, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and good evening, counselors. And yes, I would like to recognize as well our Director of Assessing, Ed O'Neill, who has joined us this evening in case you have any specific questions regarding the reevaluation process or assessment values. Once every five years, we must go through a comprehensive reevaluation town-wide. 2021 tax year is... we're up for a revaluation. So we've been working hard to reassess or revalue all town property, both commercial, industrial, and residential. We are near the finish line on that revaluation process. It is under review by the Bureau of Local Assessment. Their review is similar to an audit. They check all the statistical information, the data that we've collected. They review our analysis, and that is still underway. We have not received certification from the Bureau of Local Assessments yet. So therefore, we will have to continue items 029 and 030 to your next meeting, which is the factor of one in the residential exemption because we must have that certification from the Bureau of Local Assessment before we can act. But we are still on time within our timeline. We normally conduct those hearings in the first meeting of December. We were trying to get it done a little earlier this year. But being a revaluation year makes it very difficult because it's a much more intense review by the Bureau of Local Assessment. One thing, important note to remember is these values that are used for fiscal year 21 tax bills are based on calendar year 2019 sales and income data. That's all pre-COVID. So during that time period, you know, sales values are up, income and expense data revealed, a growing commercial valuation base. And these values are based on that information. Again, being pre-COVID, we can't take the impacts of COVID into consideration for the revaluation purposes. We've had some inquiries regarding the increase in commercial valuations. The best way for us to handle commercial property owners' concerns regarding their valuations is going to be through the abatement process. And we need to have them file for an abatement if they feel their value is overstated, and particularly due to COVID-related issues. The best way for us to handle this would be to, on a case-by-case basis, have them come in with their updated information so that the Board of Assessors can hear how they've been impacted. And if there's any relief we can provide, it would be through that abatement process. That's how they should avail themselves... that's what they should avail themselves to with any concerns they have with the assessments that are issued for tax year 2021. I think that's all I need... all I had to say. And if I have any questions, again, myself and Ed O'Neill are available this evening to answer those questions. Thank you.
Oh, you're muted.
Thank, thank you very, very much. May I ask if there's any questions right now of Director Milne or Mr. O'Neill? Okay, and we will be, we will be moving and continuing those items to our next meeting when we get to those on the agenda. Thank you very much. We hope the certification will come in shortly. Back to you, Town Manager.
Thank you. Back to my Town Manager update. As a reminder, the town of Barnstable continues to follow the orders and directives of our governor. The governor continues to frequently update his orders and directives. Therefore, I encourage everyone to go to mass.gov website or to the town of Barnstable website and read these orders and directives. Don't, I say this every meeting, but, but don't listen to what somebody else told you or you see posted somewhere on an unofficial site. It's very simple. Mass.gov, you'll see COVID come up on the screen, click on it. You'll be able to go into all of the different items that are offered by the state of Massachusetts relative to the governor's declaration. Please look for yourself, read for yourself. The town of Barnstable is now designated as a red high risk by the Mass Department of Public Health. We've observed an increase in the average number of positive cases. It's been double-digit this week in Barnstable. The, the direction given at this time is continuing to, for our residents to continue to provide attention to proper safety protocols, personal hygiene, physical distancing as we, as we approach the holidays and we, as we enter youth or, or any sports season, limit gathering size, wear a face mask, and in general, take personal responsibility regarding this matter. We are still in phase three, step two of the governor's four-phase recovery plan in Barnstable, but are concerned that if current trends continue, we could experience setbacks in the coming weeks. If we sustain for three weeks, the designation that we're currently in, we will be stepping back to a step one or perhaps even greater, depending on additional directives and orders by our governor. We want to thank our residents for continued adherence to these requirements. I'll just share that we, we're beginning to receive, and I completely understand the frustration because of the duration of this, of this situation from parents who want to go to their kids' sports games or participate in life the way that they knew it 10 months ago. Unfortunately, that no longer exists. And I think as responsible adults, we need to recognize that and we need to take proper action relevant to this situation. And I know part of that is, is just enduring what, what confronts us every day. But short of doing that, we will be forced to move back in these phased, this phased recovery, which will result in closing of facilities and further limiting the activities that we are just beginning to participate in again. So, so I just, I, I, I am a parent as well. I enjoy participating in life, certainly, and in my children's activities, but be patient. If, if you've got to do it remotely, please, please do that. If, if it's limited to the number of you that can go, please follow that. And when you're there, certainly follow the proper protocols. And hopefully we can hold our place here and get through this and, and get back to whatever, whatever we're looking at as we move out of this specific situation. I received a communication late in the day today, but I thought I should share it with y'all. I believe I forwarded it to Cynthia, but Barnstable Public Schools Health Service is pleased to announce that we have been chosen to participate in the first phase of the Abbott-Binix Now COVID-19 K-12 testing program. This testing program is a rapid antigen test for COVID-19. Rapid antigen tests perform best when the person is tested in the early stages of infection. Anyone receiving a rapid antigen test is still required to confirm the result with a additional test, whether positive or negative. And this test is not to be used for wide-scale surveillance testing at this time. It is also important to note that current protocols will remain in place, including students and staff who develop symptoms outside of the school should not go to school in hopes of receiving a rapid antigen test. These individuals must continue to report their absence to the school and contact their healthcare provider for further instruction. The Directors of Health Services, along with our district physician, Dr. Katie Rudman, are in the process of completing necessary criteria and planning the implementation of this program. It is unknown how many tests the district will receive. With the limited access and current delays in testing on Cape Cod, we hope this additional testing capacity will allow us to identify positive cases of COVID in our school community earlier in an effort to limit further spread and to help keep our students and staff safe at school. So I think I've had forwarded you the link to all of the communities, and so take a look at that at your leisure. And Director Poyet, our Communications Director, will be reviewing that and linking it in on our website as well. So for future access, if the public wants to look either on the state website or, or certainly on the town of Barnstable COVID website, they'll be able to see. We continue to prepare the proposed capital and operating budgets for FY 2022. We await the state of Massachusetts to pass an FY 2021 budget, which establishes a baseline for state aid, and the state aid is used in establishing the town's FY 22 operating budget. We postpone the joint town council-school committee meeting, at which our Finance Director provides a fiscal overview in our effort to prepare a coordinated budget for FY 22, and will reschedule once the state FY 2021 budget is finalized. We plan to incorporate the updates, the town council, of the town council strategic plan into the FY 22 budget development. We held the calendar year rate hearings at 10:00 a.m. on November 17th via Zoom for any proposed rate changes for calendar year 2021. And we encourage the public to view the proposed calendar year rate changes on the town's website and provide any comment. I plan to move forward with approval of said fees on December 16th, 2020. So I, I hope that any public who hasn't had the chance to review and comment yet could please do so, email, telephone, whatever the best method is for you. But I plan to make a decision on approval as requested or modified. You know, by December 16th, the modifications will occur as a result of comment that I received, if, if I modify what, what's been proposed. And you can always find our budget information on the town's website. I've already shared the next item with you relevant to the T-Mobile matter. The Economic Development Task Force will report to town council later this evening. We appreciate the time and effort of the Economic Development Task Force and are supportive of their recommendations. Specifically, staffer of our Marine and Environmental Affairs is actively working toward many of the objectives outlined in the Economic Development Task, by the Economic Development Task Force, and will continue these. The Economic Development Task Force has been a productive and collaborative partnership between the town council citizens and staff, and we anticipate that relationship continuing as we move forward. So in advance, I want to just say thank you. It's been time and effort well spent. On Tuesday and Wednesday evening this week, our Department of Public Works removed the concrete blocks and reconfigured Hyannis Main Street back to two lanes. There will be some additional minor cleanup occurring over the next several days. By most accounts, the effort to allow more pedestrians and businesses to use Main Street was a successful response to the pandemic in keeping our town open and available to residents and visitors alike. We are already in talks about alternatives for next year and beyond. I want to thank all that were involved in this effort as we continue to manage this difficult situation. That concludes the Town Manager update. I'm going to turn it over to Director Santos to provide his monthly update on the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. But if you have any questions for me on my part, I'm more than happy to answer.
Before we, before we hear from Dan, any questions to Town Manager? Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Heeder. I look forward to the upcoming scheduled presentation by the Economic Development, Development Task Force. But to be honest with you, I was looking for some of the information on the website, and I could not find it under committees, boards, and commissions or anyone else. So I would like to see when they meet, the minutes, who's involved, and see any upcoming attachment we have today. Good information, good work they're doing. But anyways, I'm hoping they can raise their profile and get the credit they deserve on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Any other councillors' questions for Town Manager? I would just like to make the comment, thank you, Town Manager, for your leadership in putting up the barriers for the summer. It, I think, added a lot to the Main Street, and it was really fun to go down Main Street, see all the activity in keeping those stores and mostly our restaurants open. So thank you very much for that.
I, just a side note, I was on Main Street picking up some takeout a few weeks ago, and there was a couple, there was a brother and sister, one from Florida and the other from Michigan, who were here, and they were staying Down Cape. And they had told me they had properly, you know, they, they, they had properly quarantined, so I had nothing to worry about. But they, they had come to Main Street Hyannis because they had heard down Cape that Main Street Hyannis was open for business. And that was encouraging to hear that because I don't think that every community had the opportunity to do what we were able to do. So again, I thank our staff, I thank our businesses, and I'm glad that our visitors continue to come to Main Street. So, thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager. Mr. Dan Santos, Director of DPW. Hi, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. President and town councillors. Great to be with you here tonight. Going to give you a brief update on the comprehensive wastewater management planning that's been ongoing at DPW since our last report. The single most important thing we've done with the last couple of months, as we've been discussing with you in these updates, is we submitted our environmental impact report on Friday, November 13th, last Friday, to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, who reviews and ultimately approves the plan and provides a certificate to the town. In the last month, we've been working with S-MAST, who does our modeling on the total maximum daily loads, and we've had to revise the plan in some areas to increase sewer ring in the Three Bays watershed, in the areas of Osterville and around Long Pond and Morrison's Mills, in the area of Shubels Pond, in order to remove enough nitrogen from the system to meet the standards in the Three Bays system ultimately. We expect to get the MEPA decision. It's a statutory requirement that they decide, and we will have that decision by the end of December. I anticipate, given our conversations with them and our back and forth over the last year really, that, that we will meet with approval. They have pointed out issues in our earlier submissions that we need to address, and we have done that. Once that MEPA decision comes in, the final piece of the regulatory process is we will submit that decision in our report to the Cape Cod Commission, and they will make a consistency determination with the Section 208 of the Clean Water Act, which is the 208 Plan, basically just assuring that our plan is consistent with that law. The current EIR document, the Environmental Impact Report, is on the town's website on our Water Resources page, and you can go to the town's homepage to find that if you'd like to see that. With regards to Joint Base Cape Cod, we have no new information. There really has been nothing going on that we're aware of, and we have inquired over the last couple of months. And I assume it's just a COVID issue, but that's really ground to a halt. Manager Ls mentioned in his report, Mother's Park, so I don't need to spend much time on that, other than we continue to work on road ownership issues. And as part of this year's capital program, we will be submitting a project for the design for that pump station. As far as projects that are underway, we continue to work on our Route 28 into the east major backbone and pump station project, which will provide a pump station at the intersection of Finney's Lane and Route 28, as well as sewer ring along Finney's Lane and Route 28. Our preliminary design continues. And in addition, we are coordinating and partnering with the Hyannis water system, and we'll be removing dead ends in some of the roadways when we install sewers to improve our water system, water supply system. We expect a winter 2021, 22 construction start date, basically a year from now on that significant piece of our wastewater infrastructure. The Long Pond project, Finney's Lane project and Route 28 to 149, in conjunction with the Morrison's Mills school pump station, our survey work is still undergoing, is underway, and we target completion of that for March of 2021, next couple of months. On the Strawberry Hill Road project, that we continue to work with Vineyard Wind designers on, and we will be starting that project, hopefully, construction in the spring along with the Vineyard Wind project. We have submitted our application to the State Revolving Fund in order to get financing for that project. And we continue to coordinate with legal, as you'll hear about later, regarding continuances of county roads in order for us to be allowed to do our work. And finally, I wanted to mention that we continue to work with our neighbors, primarily the town of Sandwich right now, and working with the Three Bays watershed and some possible opportunities to coordinate and have facilities possibly with the town of Sandwich, either for treatment and our disposal as an alternative to JBCC, because it doesn't look like that's going very well at the moment. And we want to continue to make sure that we have opportunities for disposal outside of the town of Barnstable and outside of areas that are of concern for other water resources purposes. So we continue to work with them. Another option there is nutrient trading, where if our sewer ring provides enough nitrogen removal that they don't have to sewer, then there's the possibility that we will engage in some negotiations for basically making a deal where they could do offset projects in Barnstable and save them from doing sewer ring in their community. So that concludes my update for this evening, and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Councillors, any questions? Director Santos. We have Madam Vice President, followed by Councillor Muriel.
Thank you very much for the update, Dan. How about our neighbors to the east, Yarmouth? I know I was encouraged to see that they have appropriated some money towards the efforts. What, what about any partnering with Yarmouth?
Well, they are primarily right now looking to their east and focusing on a partnership with Harwich and Dennis. And so that's the way they're moving. We remain, or we continue to keep open the possibility for either treatment from the west end of Yarmouth and affluent moving from Barnstable to Yarmouth. But at, at this point, that's probably not very But at this point, that's probably not very likely, given their direction they're taking. But of course, we're always open to having discussions with them as we move forward.
I was also interested to learn that they're looking to partner with the state, when the state opens up the road for redo on Route 28, to lay some pipe down there. And I would expect that we're doing the same, and I'm hopeful the state will look to improving Route 28 in sections that need it too, and maybe we can partner. I'm sure you're already looking. I know you've put in survey, you know, points along Route 28. So any thought about when the state might be looking to open up the road, and would we be prepared to, you know, go on there?
Yeah, that's just, that's just smart planning and smart engineering that Yarmouth is doing, and that we continue to do with the Yarmouth Road and Route 28. We'll be putting pipes north-south in that intersection for that very reason, to save money. We will continue to talk to the state about Route 28 as we move east and west along that road. Right now, reconstruction of 28 is not on their near-site horizon, but as projects do come up, and our timing works out, we'll absolutely work with them to save the Town of Barstow some money.
Thank you. And one last thing, just following up on our special meeting that we had regarding fiscal policy of the CWMP. I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're certainly going to have to solicit public input and promote active engagement to see the CWMP to fruition. So I know you'll be working on those efforts as well, Dan. Thank you.
Yes, we'll be, it's very important to us, and we know it is to you. We've actually just put out an RFP for some citizens' engagement experts to help us, you know, package this and provide some consulting help for us as we move forward. We want to make sure that we are engaging our citizens, and we make sure that they are providing input into all of our projects, so that it is truly a partnership. So that's definitely the plan.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Santos. The question I have is with Joint Base kind of in limbo, so to speak. I know Phase 1, as Phase 1 rolls out, the issue, my understanding, wasn't so much with the treatment, but the issue was with effluent disposal. Is there kind of a break-even point during that timeline, when effluent kind of overruns our ability to process it? And then I can only assume that you're working diligently with everything that you can, and maybe, I guess the next step would be to set up what, micro disposal areas maybe along the route? Or I don't know if you could elaborate on?
Sure. Really two points relative to that question, councillor. One is, we have a study ongoing for effluent disposal, opportunities, options, locations, both in-town and out, that's underway. But I guess the more important point is, the current treatment plant and disposal facilities will accommodate all of Phase 1.
That's good news. Thank you.
You bet.
If I might, Council President, add to Dan's response to Vice President Rob Grissette's question. The Town Administrator in Yarmouth is leaving shortly, but I have been in communication with him on many issues, actually, as we have throughout his time in Yarmouth. But he is going to try to move forward with discussions on some sort of an MOU, similar to what we did for Pompano Street Choo String with Mashpee and Sandwich, so that we can enter into a little more formal relationship relevant to Lewis Bay. Now, I don't know how far that will proceed, considering he's leaving and new administration is coming in, but that's appreciated, and that's been the relationship we've had with Yarmouth, a very good, strong relationship. Certainly during our water supply challenges, they stepped up to assist us, and we appreciated that. I've also continued discussions relevant to some of the other claims that are out there, you know, relevant to third parties, and issues in Barnstable, and with the state, and with the budding community. So we have a good dialogue going at this point. We've also been before our Board of Health and Director Santos. I delegated now to Director Santos the continued discussion through our Board of Health about where in town it may be appropriate to consider nitrogen-sensitive designations, so that we begin to act on what we refer to as Phase 3 of our plan, but in reality, is Phase 1, 2, and 3. The actions relevant to onsite and innovative systems is really built within the entire study, and not just something we hold till the end in hopes that we may not have to do as much sewer ring as we have planned for. So, you know, within our comprehensive wastewater management plan, we have an incremental five-year review, so that as we gain on this issue, and as new technologies might yield some benefit to us, I am confident that our Public Works Department will be able to adapt our plan to take advantage of that. So this is a very dynamic opportunity for us. The state's used to Barnstable doing this, we've been doing this for decades, so it's not as though we're way out on a limb, not really knowing if we can implement something like this. It's the way Barnstable does business. I think Councilman Neary shared that earlier on a different issue, but we are recognized as an innovative leader in the state of Massachusetts and beyond, and I'm confident that our current team is better than anyone I've ever served with. So we're going to deliver this to you, to this community, and we will engage our citizens in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager, and thank you, Madam Vice President, for bringing up our relationships with our neighbors. Thank you. Any other councillors' questions? Thank you, Director Santos.
My pleasure.
And if there's nothing else, we're going to close this Town Manager's report, and we're going to, just so everybody knows, I was hoping that we take a break at 9:00. What we will do is have the Barnstable Economic Development presentation, and then we will definitely take a break. The exception to that is, Madam Clerk, if you need a break, you need to just give me the timeout, okay? Everybody else can kind of disappear, come and go, but you're crucial to this. I have a backup. If I have to leave, I'm going to ask Madam Vice President to take over. So, okay. So that's our plan, and I do want to mention and thank President Steinheilber, and also President Proctor, because they were instrumental in establishing the Barnstable Economic Development Task Force, and we're happy to have them with us tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. President, would you like to act on the minutes prior to?
Just going to say that, but thank you very much. So, Madam President, if you would please act on the minutes.
Yes, I'd like to move to vote on the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2020, as presented.
Second. First and a second. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this is approval of the minutes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councillors?
Councillors?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shawnessy?
Yes.
Dar?
Yes.
Steinheilber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're going to do our communications from elected officials, boards, and committees, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements, any from any of the councillors. Councilor Bogan, please.
Briefly, not surprisingly, but unfortunately, the 51st.
Councilor, you're breaking up. We can't hear you.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay.
Let me pass, then I'm going to switch to a different laptop that I can pass. The short story there, though, is that the Village Stroll in Osterville was canceled this year, and there will be special events every Saturday.
Okay, message received. Thank you. All right, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make a brief report out of the Zoning and Regulatory Committee. For the last several months, we have been working on a amendment that would provide for accessory dwelling units to be by right in the Town of Barnstable. As many of you know, we currently have two zoning ordinances that allow accessory affordable apartments and family apartments in the Town of Barnstable. These would remain in our ordinances, so this would be an additional piece. The primary purpose for considering this ADUs is to increase the number of dwelling units available for year-round rental in town, while remaining within our current wastewater capacity limitations. We're also interested in adapting single-family residential properties so they are supportive of residents at a variety of stages in their life cycle. And we want to encourage greater diversity and support of all populations, with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens.
Councilor Schnep, you just acted, you're not muted, I'm sorry.
Sorry. And we want to encourage a more economic and efficient use of the town's housing supply, and also provide homeowners with the means of obtaining rental income to defray housing costs. So that's sort of our purpose and intent in creating this ordinance. Many of you know that the Cape Cod Commission came out with a model bylaw several years ago, and a number of towns have already passed. We have gone through that model bylaw, and some of the other changes that have been made to other towns, looked at our own zoning ordinances, and have come up with a really, I think, strong draft that really works for our community. We're now at a point where we would hope to solicit a little bit more public input before it comes to the council. We've already invited two members of the Planning Board to be part of our process, and so we've gotten that input. But again, we would really like to get a little bit more public input before we recommend it to the council, to the full council. Our usual meetings are the second Thursday of the month. In December, that may conflict with another town, a special town council meeting. So if people could stay tuned, we will either be having this on the agenda in December, or we will postpone the discussion until January. But in the meantime, the draft ordinance is available on the Zoning and Regulatory Committee's website or webpage, and it will also be available on the Planning Department's webpage in the near future. So I don't know if councillors have any questions of me tonight, but I would invite any feedback. You can obviously send emails to either through our Town Administrator, Town Council Administrator Cynthia Lovell, or directly to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor, for that report, and we're going to talk a little bit more about the date of the meeting, because your work is very, very important, and don't want it sidelined at all. So we have to work with you to make sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you. Any other councillors? Okay, so continuing in communications here. So we have discussed, and you've been asked if you could see your way through a special meeting on December 10th, following December 3rd meeting. And for the most part, all councillors, nobody has said that they had a problem with that, with the exception of Councilor Schnep, who has this very, very important meeting. She may be able to, but across other committees, a meeting, but traditionally, her committee has been meeting when we have town council, and so therefore, there was none on the 10th, and therefore she planned it for that. An alternative, the Town Manager and Mr. Mil, Finance Director, said that they want to set aside two hours to have this meeting. So I would ask you, we don't need to make a decision now, but be thinking about this. Another alternative is to have, instead of that, usually the, on the last meeting in December, it's not a heavy agenda traditionally, and we certainly will not be having our traditional Christmas party. And if it's the role of the council that we have the meeting on the 17th, try to keep the agenda tight and have that two hours set aside for the meeting, instead of having a special meeting on the 10th. I leave that to you to please, through our administrator, to let Cindy know what your feelings are. My strong inclination is kind as Councilor Schnep is saying, that she would postpone it for another time, another day. If that's going to cause confusion for the public, I would like not for that to happen. So if councillors would just show us your opinion, and let us know if you want to discuss it right now, but basically, look at your schedule and see what you want. If we comfortably do it on the 17th, that's great. What I have asked of the Town Manager and his staff is when they're talking about the wastewater systems, to separate it. One is a system and the engineering, another one is implementation, and another one is finance. And across the finance, and how we're going to do that, when it relates to the public, is very, very crucial. But I've asked that we not have everything all at once, because it's an exhausting operation. So I thought the two-hour separate meeting would really give time to focus and questions and answers. So no one has any comments right now, just file them in when you get a chance, so it's comfortable for everybody. Thank you very, very much. I would just like to continue to reiterate, but please bring your concerns and your thoughts to our administrator, your administrator, Cindy Lovell, so that she can kind of help move along with every concern that you have as a Town Councillor. If there's a complaint or something that a citizen has launched, you can simply go to Cindy, she will take it from there, she'll get it to the right department, or she'll get it fixed, or she can kind of keep a track on it, just some repair work, or things that have to be cleaned up. I'm trying to avoid too much going to our Town Manager. He's got a lot on his plate, and so we want him to, it's not that I don't want you to talk to the Town Manager, and you're always free to do so, but try to use the office, the administrator. And also, people have said that they didn't get support from leadership, and nine out of 10, we didn't know that you were even working on a project, it was then separate without us, so there's not much I can do if I don't know that you have an issue. But thank you very much for that. If there's nothing else for communications, we will now, if it's okay with the council, we will have now the presentation from the Economic Development Task Force. Thank you. Imagine the task force is here. Here we go. Leadership, and nine out of 10. Mr. Chairman, is that right? Right, your speaker is muted. You have to turn your speaker on, Roy.
Thank you, councillor. I think maybe Ali Maloney would speak first?
Hello, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. To start, I'm going to list the members of the Economic Development Task Force, and several of us are here this evening, if you have any questions. I'm Ali Maloney, Chair, AMG Realty. We have Matt Eddy, Baxter and I, Vice Chair. Jake Dewey, landlord and multifamily housing developer. Roy Kadignani, Conserve Group. Dan Oljola, Down Cape Engineering. Chuck Carey, Carey Commercial. Mark Sexton, Cape Cod Five. Jason Sisco, Riverway Restaurant. Rob Brennan, Cape Built. Phil Bedrow, Bedrow Law. Paul Nedzwicki, Cape Cod Healthcare. The Economic Development Task Force is a presidential committee charged with identifying competitive advantages as well as challenges to doing business in Barnstable. Our job is to recommend to town council public and private sector strategies and actions to improve the business climate, promote job growth and diversity, and new investment in the town of Barnstable. I'd like to introduce Roy Kadignani as Chair of the Waterways Access Subcommittee.
Councilors, hello. Welcome to my den. I'm usually in here all by myself, but I see quite a crowd. So I will try to make my comments brief. A few of us, members of the Economic Development Task Force, who have particular interest in waterfront activities, maritime activities, and boating, have set aside time over the past several months to create a Waterfront Access Subcommittee. Our members, some of whom are here, I'd like to introduce Mark Sexton, may not be with us, but he's a member, and also of the Subcommittee, Evans Arnold from Hyannis Port. Bill Abbott is with us this evening, and Jake Dewey, mentioned previously. Our Subcommittee goals are to increase the public access to the water. Our plan is to support all of your town council priorities for economic development associated with waterfront commerce. We take our guidance from that. We're planning on pursuing specific initiatives to assist the town staff to make changes which will improve the current situation regarding the waterfront as quickly as possible. And our plan is to continue to provide future in-depth recommendations for improvements to waterfront access. Our challenges: access to the waterfront is the driver of much commerce in other local harbors besides our own that make it easy to rent a mooring for boats to stay on overnight for short periods of time. We currently, in our town, lack enough regular and transient moorings, transient slips, and active public launch service to provide easy access for transient boaters to our shoreside and downtown restaurants, accommodations, and merchants. This is a missed opportunity for economic activity. Our public boat ramps are overloaded, and nearby parking to them is scarce. Waterfront parking to access waterfront activities is very difficult and costly. Much of what draws our year-round and summer residents to Cape Cod is access to the water. The growing demand for moorings and dock space has overwhelmed our current capacity, creating, unfortunately, long waiting lists. Sometimes the wait is decades. Even small trailer-able, hand-carry craft, small sailboats, paddleboards, kayaks have limited ability to safely launch vessels on our shores and park nearby. Our Water Access Subcommittee, working with staff, planning and development, mooring department, engineering, architectural department, has had a series of meetings to vet and discuss five initiatives. We have begun much thinking on these after today. Hopefully, we receive your blessing. We'd like to move forward with them. The first is to try to enhance the number of moorings by reorganizing our mooring field. Following a program that was created in Hyannis Port by their civic association donation, they facilitated a free engineering analysis of the Hyannis Port Anchorage. That more efficient layout of the mooring fields there, along with bathymetric studies, was provided to the town mooring officer at no charge. He then was able to work with the mooring servicers to provide a relayout for those citizens in that area that contributed to that effort. That relayout, without specific inclusion of numbers, increased the number of moorings. I'll use a number of 10%. Our plan would be to investigate the cost to prepare bathymetric studies and surveys for other large, high-demand mooring fields, such as Hyannis, such as the Three Bays. We would present that case for funding, similar to Hyannis Port's example, to local businesses and civic associations that might be willing to contribute to the effort. We'd then facilitate those studies to be done. We have expertise to do that. And we would present that information at no cost to the harbor master. The hope is that he would then be able to relay out those fields, such as we have, using the same water surface, create additional moorings, and in many cases, probably better quality moorings. So that would be part of our initiative for moorings. Transient moorings. The idea is that if you're a boater in the Nantucket Sound area, most other towns have great facilities for us to go and stay overnight by having a transient mooring just for a night or two. Very difficult in our town. Unfortunately, we have a large harbor with lots of commerce, but there are very few moorings available for that. The town harbor master initiated a program this past year. I think had one in Hyannis and one in the Three Bays area, and the Three Bays was very successful. So they have already instituted a program, thankfully, forward-thinking, young leadership in that department. And we hope to assist them to continue that effort, to do so by soliciting information from other harbors that have done very well with this, try to cut through some of the issues with regard to private use of moorings and sharing that private use with transient boaters. Standardizing moorings. We'll bring the result and the recommendations, which may require some change to their staffing, hopefully all self-funding to the council. Third step, or third initiative, will be transient mooring slip rental program. Also, forward-thinking, current department leaders have done this, and some slips in Hyannis were rented this summer. I think they were quite pleased with the result. Very difficult for us to create more water real estate, but whatever we can do to help in that area, we will try. Third initiative: to enhance access and parking at town boat ramps. Again, bringing back to your staff, working with DPW expertise to design efficiency improvements for our major ramp in the Hyannis area, Gary Brown. Simply line stripes, all sorts of different things that could be done to make more access to that ramp better, and possibly other ramps in the area and in town. There are many, and many don't have adjacent parking, and that's probably the biggest issue. So the possibility of creating better parking, temporary trailer storage, may be a difficult proposition, but we'll work with planning and development and other departments to try to improve that. Lastly, Calmas Park waterfront redevelopment. I think it's been on the town burner for some time. Not sure exactly how much traction it's had. And our goal here would simply be to be advisory and to assist staff, various departments, with our expertise to try to develop that parcel of land into a first-class facility for waterfront access for small boats, sailing, et cetera. With that, I've asked to make my comments brief. We just sort of like you to know what we're doing. We're hoping to set to work right away. We'll look to the support of our staff. We've been so supportive thus far. And those few of us, five of us, will work very hard to try to further the interests of the town in this area. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maloney, did Jake Dewey want to speak? Did he want to speak to us?
No, I didn't have anything specific to say.
At the end of the presentation on the Waterways, would you like me to finish our presentation? Or would you like to have some question for the Waterways Subcommittee, Mr. President?
Why don't we do that right now? I will ask any councilors with any questions to Roy. Okay, Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to all the members of the Economic Development Task Force. I had a conversation with Roy, maybe a couple of weeks back at Waterways, and I had the great weekend that I was able to get away. I went down to Block Island, and we happened to be coming back in to Hyannis Harbor. And you look at that area of land, that Calmas, it is an asset of the town. And the tremendous parking availability of this there, and it just kind of breeds, in my mind, an incredible opportunity to try to kind of bring the boating public and give them a foothold, really, on Ocean Street with access to restaurants and a quick, you know, a quick trip up to Maine. I think that it would be an incredible boon to the town if some serious talk can go into figuring out a way to develop that into really a world-class area for boating. And as many people know, boating brings a tremendous amount of growth, opportunity, and dollars, and money spent in the transient activities. You look at the boat basins in Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. Through my work, I've had the opportunity to be involved with a project that went on down at Sacquetucket Harbor. I know Roy and I spoke about it. If you get an opportunity to drive down Cape, I also had a conversation with the harbor master down there, John. It's been an incredible success. They put in 202 slips, and they were 100% occupied. They had transient slips available, as well as a fully rented-out basin. And again, we can do it in a fashion that I think would really bring, really make it world-class for that part of town and for the town of Barnstable. So thank you again, Roy, and I look forward to seeing where the Calmas Park redevelopment could go. I think it would be just, I don't want to call it a no-bran. It would require some, certainly some in-depth financing, but there are opportunities available. I know that Sacquetucket received over $2.5 million with the federal grants for their project down there. So it really, I think it makes a lot of sense. And thank you again.
Thank you, Councilor. And thank you, Roy. Very clear, very concise presentation. Very, very well done. Thank you. I do want to make note that Mr. Abbott has joined us. Thank you for being with us, as also Jake, thank you for being with us. Back to you, Ms. Maloney.
I think Councilor Steinheber had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just wanted to echo the support from Councilor Neary. Roy, I appreciate the work you've been doing, and all the members of your Subcommittee, and of course, the task force as a whole. When that task force was formed a couple of years ago, I was still president, but it was about to, Jimmy Crocker was coming in as president. We worked together to put that committee together, and really was to bring forward the expertise that we have in this town. And as Ally pointed out, listing off the members, you can tell there's a lot of different industries represented there. We had an original set of members that were chosen to serve, and the membership has changed a little bit over time. And that was kind of the point of, part of it, having an ad hoc presidential committee where members could kind of come and go. There's not set terms. They obviously have careers and businesses they're running. But we wanted to kind of tap into their expertise as end-users, really, of interfacing with the town, being able to tell us what works, what doesn't work, and to make recommendations to us. So they've been, this is the second time they've been in front of us, definitely anticipating the volume of recommendations to be ramping up over the next several months. I spoke with Ally this week about that. And I'll continue to serve as the liaison for that task force, but looking forward to working with you over to advance these recommendations forward. In specific, with the Waterways, you heard the town manager and his reports with his support of your efforts. I don't know if he has anything else to add at this time, but just want to assure you, all of your efforts, your time is very much appreciated, and we look forward to working on these recommendations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Last fall, we came before you, and we outlined our request for an appointment of a permitting coordinator. You listened, and the position was funded, and it was filled by Maggie Flynn. By all reports, Maggie has become an invaluable asset relating to the permitting processes at 200 Main Street. She's proven herself to be both a quick learner and a wealth of knowledge. She's worked with the Building Commissioner as a Site Plan Review Coordinator, and she is now the go-to person for anyone who is just not sure where to go next with the permitting process. When COVID-19 hit this past March, Maggie sprung into action. She worked with local and state officials, business owners and the public, and in two weeks, created an entirely new application process that allowed close to 60 restaurants to have alcohol expansions outdoors. If you've been involved in any governmental processes, you know that that does not happen. Had it been two months, it would have been too late. Maggie's role continues to evolve. I know that the town website is being amended to make her presence front and center. And I'm sure that once 200 Main opens for the public again, the same will happen there. Thank you for having confidence in our ask and for approving this position. Know that it's made a big difference in the business community. This year, the EDTF established a housing Subcommittee with members being Matt Eddy, Chair, myself, Jake Dewey, Chuck Carey, and Rob Brennan. Our focus, and the focus of this presentation, centers around the growth incentive area in Hyannis. What's working, and what changes can be made towards making Hyannis a place where businesses thrive, where there is housing to support those businesses? A community that draws visitors and citizens across the region to live and work here. The goal is a vibrant mixed-use regional center with a greater jobs-to-housing ratio. We've spent a great deal of time asking ourselves, what are the obstacles and impediments to this sort of growth in Barnstable? Over time, we've identified a number of areas that we believe should be addressed, issues that we determined were detriments to drawing qualified employees, developers, and entrepreneurs to work here, to invest and develop here in our community. We've brainstormed, analyzed the desired goals and the corresponding hurdles, the roadblocks, and I'm going to list five of those goals right now. Number one: instead of a mix of apartment complexes, single-family homes, and commercial properties, put regulations for the downtown area in place that allow for an increase in allowable heights and top-of-the-shop housing, while still closely maintaining the community character and respecting the infrastructure limitations. Two: encourage a traditional mix of uses so people shop, work, go to school, and play in close proximity to their home. Three: expand and simplify what the allowed commercial uses are in the downtown area. Four: move away from antiquated zoning regulations that are difficult to navigate and subject to individual interpretation. Move towards use regulation tables, clear, sensible, tangible information that'll encourage individuals to invest in our community, knowing better what their risks are. Five: have a more cohesive, transparent, streamlined process for permitting. Elizabeth Jenkins, the Director of Planning and Development, is going to share with you a brief presentation on the proposed rezoning of parts of Hyannis, as well as an overview of Form-Based Code. Collectively, we feel that this zoning amendment is a significant change that aligns with our town's strategic plan and goals of our community. Form-Based Code will promote the positive redevelopment and repurposing of lots and buildings in the growth incentive zone. It will promote a walkable downtown while preserving the seaside village environment that embodies our community. By adopting these changes, we will be opening the doors to economic growth and expansion, promoting new housing, new business, jobs, and increased commerce. promoting new housing, new business, jobs, and increased commerce. This revised code will allow more by-right development and streamlining of the process. Our belief is that it will make Hyannis an even more desirable place to work, play, and live. The Economic Development Task Force respectfully asks that you do everything in your power to move these changes forward through the process in as swift a manner as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Maloney, please?
Why don't we hear Elizabeth's plan, and then you probably will have some questions for us.
All right. Thank you very much. Elizabeth?
Thank you, President Hebert. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development for the town of Barnstable. And I just want to share my thanks to Ally and the Economic Development Task Force for giving me a moment of their presentation to give you an update on this important project. Ally spoke eloquently to the, to the goals and objectives of this project, so I won't linger here. But to say that we are advancing in this, in this process to, again, to re, to update and modernize the zoning in the downtown Hyannis zoning districts that encompass the growth incentive zone. We started this process earlier in the year with outreach to our community, development of revitalization and infill strategies through a state-funded grant. We have retained some extremely talented consultants, both who write code and who study urban design, to help bring this forward. We've been through seven, several iterations of code drafting, one with the Economic Development Task Force. It was very important to us that we have input from the, from the people in our community who use the regulations, who draw the plans, who develop the housing, who fill our tenant spaces, so we know that the code that we're bringing forward is usable and accessible to them. And I'm proud to announce tonight that we have an initial draft of the, of the code up on the Planning and Development website for public review. I'd like to emphasize that it certainly is a work in progress at this point, but certainly with the challenges of engaging our public, we feel like we want to give every opportunity for folks to be able to take a look at that, take a look at this draft code and have the opportunity to submit any questions. So, what we have drafted, again, is a, is a form-based code, but also a hybrid code. We were very careful to identify areas where those form-based regulations were necessary, really looking at the relationship of buildings to the street. As Ally said, tried to make the code easier to use by consolidating districts. Very importantly, I think, moving away from regulating housing based on a unit-per-acre measure, which is so challenging in Hyannis, that has a wide variety of lot sizes and really was producing a difficult discretionary process, either going to the planning board or through a regulatory agreement for, for a lot of housing projects that just made a lot of sense and should be able to happen in a much easier way in downtown Hyannis. Again, simplifying and expanding our permitted uses, and we hope to have this be a fully, fully illustrated and very visual code. Those visuals are not in the draft yet. Certainly makes sense to add those at the end, but they are forthcoming. So, again, we have a number of overlapping jurisdictions in the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone, again, pulling out through sort of a data-based approach, which ones we want to regulate through a form-based manner, and then consolidating our districts down, simplifying our regulations, and then, again, adding the sort of form-based zoning components in the sections around Hyannis Main Street and, and the neighboring areas. Again, simplifying the code, very easy, very visual, that you have the name of your district, illustrations of your district, and your dimensional requirements, so that, again, in the end, very accessible and easy to use. We want to make sure, we want to make sure the code works. And so, we've done working with, again, Uteal and Dan Bartman, a number of test fits of the regulations in the ordinance to look at areas where, where we do want to encourage new growth and new investment, where we do want to improve and enhance on our form. So, this is, this is, again, an area that's currently only allowing four-dwelling units per acre and the potential, again, to increase density, to improve, to improve the form and appearance of, of development in the area and to gain a significant number of housing units in a, in a place in our community where we've designated that, that as appropriate. So, again, the first draft of our ordinance is on the Planning and Development website under Projects. We have an online forum there where folks can post questions and comments, and we look forward to continuing to work with the council to, to move this to the, move this through the process and get comments from our public. Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions for any of us? Any comments?
Any councilors? Well, that's symbolic of a very clear, well-presented report. Excellent. Thank you for your great work. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I just want to commend the task force for what is obviously an incredible amount of work that you have put in, that I think has been really impressive. I also want to thank you so much. You know, they took the time to invite all three Hyannis counselors to participate, and I really appreciated that, and I hope that you continue to do that, because I would love to continue to know what you guys are working on and to be able to provide feedback on that. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you for a great presentation and for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming to make your presentation. Again, excellent presentation. We look forward to continue working with you, being supportive of the great work that you've brought forward. And I'm sure that Director Dentons will help move this forward, and we look forward to hearing more and being supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You. Be safe. Happy holidays.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Counselors, we're going to take a three-minute break. See you in five minutes, no later than seven. On our way. Thank you, everybody. See you in seven.
You're all set. Go ahead.
Okay, Sarah, we're gonna go, okay? Yeah? You tell us when you're ready.
You're ready. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Counselors. We're going to open Old Business at this point. I would ask that Counselor Clark would kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-023, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Under Old Business, item number 2021-23, appropriation and transfer, I should say this is a public hearing, requiring a roll call majority. The appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $320,000 of community preservation funds for the acquisition of 28 Falcon Road, on which will be on which will be placed a conservation restriction to be held by the Barnstable Land Trust.
Second.
Thank you. You have a first and a second. Is who will be speaking on this?
I believe Janet Milkman and Lindsey Counsel are there. There's Lindsey. Lindsey, are you reading this in or?
Janet or Lindsey?
Yes.
Lindsey, would you like to provide the justification for this one or shall I proceed?
Can you hear me? I can do it if you'd like.
Yes, proceed, Lindsey.
All right. Well, thank you, Town Council President Hebert. I'm Lindsey Counsel, Community Preservation Commission Chairman. And that's a welcome, like to welcome our new counselor, Statelist. Welcome to the team. It's great to have you at full strength. With me tonight is Janet Milkman, Executive Director of the Barnstable Land Trust. He has some slides for us and more background on the project. And also David Anthony, he of the Risk Management Department, who worked with the CIs here on this project and is here for questions as well. The background is at the August 17, 2020, Community Preservation Committee meeting. The eight members present voted unanimously by roll call vote to recommend to the Town Council through the Town Manager, the Town of Barnstable's amended funding request for $320,000 in community preservation. Appropriate to an amount of $320,000. Represents a portion of the total $347,500. The Barnstable Land Trust will hold the conservation restriction and is contributing to.
Mr. President, perhaps Janet Milkman can have better Wi-Fi.
I could pick it up. I could finish the communication.
Thank you.
Starting with the sentence where he. You can hear him clicking in and out here.
We keep losing you. So for a minute here, let's let Town Manager Alice carry on.
Yeah, the Barnstable Land Trust will hold the conservation restriction and is contributing 27,500 in cash and in-kind contributions. The Town of Barnstable had originally planned to pursue a drinking water grant for this property. Since the first read of the council order on October 15, the town and the BTL have redirected that application to another property, the Wakeby Road property. There is only one application per grant cycle for this source of funding assistance allowed for the town. The drinking water rights will still be part of the conservation restriction rights to be held by the town. The CPC has requested that the conservation restriction reflecting Barnstable Land Trust as the holder be approved by the legal department. This land acquisition would satisfy many Barnstable Open Space Plan and Community Preservation Act goals related to water supply protection, natural resource preservation, as well as passive recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Janet, did you have any opening comment here before?
I do, I do, and I'll be brief. I have to say I admire your stamina, all of you. Congratulations. I don't know how you do it. I'm Janet Milkman. I'm the Executive Director of the Barnstable Land Trust, which is a community-supported nonprofit organization working to protect our critical open spaces for habitat and water quality and recreation and our general quality of life. We've been working with the town since 1983, when we were founded, to partner on land conservation. And we've been able to leverage, help the town leverage our expertise and public and private money to protect what's most important for our Cape economy and our quality of life here. This project is really a wonderful one. We're so excited to be here, working with the town on it. It has been on our list for a long time. Sarah, I think, has a couple of slides, if she could show them. It's about 16 acres. It is in west Barnstable on Plum Street. And it is surrounded on two sides by about 140 acres of conservation land, much of which is owned by the town, some of which is owned by Barnstable Land Trust. So we are sort of completing the conservation of this big, wonderful area of wildlife habitat and conservation land with trails. It has wetlands, it has wildlife habitat, it has walking trails that have been used by neighbors for years. And of particular note in this one, and Sarah, if you could show the next slide, is that the southern border of it is one of the only remaining unpaved sections of the indigenous walking trails that were used for thousands of years by the first inhabitants of our town and our region. It's now part of the Cape Cod Pathways. And it is a wonderful opportunity for education of the history and culture of the land. And for that reason, we received a contribution for this project from the Native Land Conservancy, which is the Wampanoag Land Trust in neighboring Mashpee. And Sarah, if you could just put the one remaining slide up here, we'll be able to see that it's part of the Cape Cod Pathways Trail, which is the 11 miles of trail that extends end to end from west Barnstable to Comahquid. The project supports the goals. So it's this red line here. The arrow is pointing to the Falcon Road property. And you can see that the red line, which is the Pathways Trail, goes along the bottom, the southern border there. The project supports the goals of the town's Open Space and Recreation Plan, which are to protect and maintain a maximum amount of open space, to enhance environmental protection, recreational opportunities, and community character. As a CPC-funded project, it requires a conservation restriction, which Barnstable Land Trust will hold, and meaning it will be protected in perpetuity. And I will stop there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony, did you want to speak? Before we open it to questions from the councilors, you may cover something that somebody is concerned about.
No, I have nothing to add this evening. I think both Lindsey and Janet and Markell's covered it through the rationale. And it's been a pleasure working with Barnstable Land Trust in partnership. On this, we've been able to achieve a much better and deeper working relationship as we strategically look at land around town that serves multiple purposes in preservation. So it's, I'm glad that we're at this point finally.
Thank you. Councilors, questions for any of our guests?
Mr. President, this is a public hearing.
Okay, so we will open it to the, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't catch, I'm sorry. Do we have anyone from the public, Sarah?
There's no one from the public at this time.
Okay, I know, thank you very much. I know that Councilor Clark has two letters that you want to read. Three letters.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, you're opening the public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Council President.
Are they all lengthy or are they just statements?
They're not that lengthy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This was written and signed by 30 residents in the neighborhood in the area and on the street. The Plum Street neighborhood would like to first express our support for the purchase of the land around Falcon Road on the west side of Plum Street. We value Barnstable's commitment to preserving natural areas and are excited about the prospect of Barnstable Land Trust's involvement in making conservation land on this property. Second, we would like to voice our serious concerns about the potential for hunting on this property, which abuts private residences on Plum Street. We, as close-knit neighbors, are requesting language that unequivocal to those hunting on the aforementioned land. We have many active people of all ages, including children and pets in our neighborhood who enjoy exploring the outdoors. And the idea of hunting in the area of our homes is extremely concerning. Thank you for your time in considering this. Again, signed by 30 people in the neighborhood. Another from Diane Jones. I urge the town to purchase the Falcon Road property in Barnstable. It is a beautiful piece of land, which borders other conservation land in that area. It is an area that has special and lovely forests. Development proceeding at a fast rate. And it is important that Barnstable protect open space. It will offer people a place to enjoy the beauty of untouched land and offers for wildlife. Please vote for the acquisition of Falcon Road. Thank you for your effort. Diane Jones. And finally, to all the councilors, please be advised as direct abutters to the Wurtman parcel, parcel number 195038. My wife and I full-heartedly support the acquisition by the Town of Barnstable. Mark Wurtman has been a great landowner and steward of this gorgeous parcel. We, as neighbors, expect the Town of Barnstable will be as well. Please vote in the affirmation for this important acquisition. We wish you all good health and be safe. Jack and Dean Delaney, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Clark, for reading that into the record. Thank you so much. Other councilors, comments, questions? May I ask right away, Janet, on that trail, is that trail clearly marked out so that the public knows where they can walk and follow the trail? It looks pretty lengthy. Right place for a walk.
It is, it is. And the maps for Cape Cod Pathways are on the town website and they are on the Barnstable Land Trust website. And it is well-marked and there are kiosks with maps in it as well.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other council, Vice, Madam Vice President, please, followed by Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to allay the concerns of the residents with regards to hunting under prohibitive activities. The H, one of them is camping, hunting, or trapping, unless for a proven nuisance to wildlife. So I also want to thank very much the fact that we have the conservation restriction in writing and all ready to be signed that accompanies this appropriation. It's, I know it's been a long time coming, getting this process down, so it goes through all the proper channels. So when we're actually voting on something, it's ready to submit. So thank you for that.
And Town Manager, Alice, please.
Vice President covered what I was going to say.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so.
Point of order, we do need to close the public hearing.
Right, yes. I wanted to ask first if there was any, Sarah, is anybody else for public hearing?
Nope, there's nobody for public, thank you.
Okay, Lynn, same thing?
No one on the phone, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now close public hearing on this item. Any conversation, comments from councilors? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to vote on item 2021-023. And a reminder that of the full council, number of 13, we need a majority of seven, because this is an appropriation and transfer order.
Council President, do we have to move to post-public hearing?
We did. Oh, do we have to move?
The President can state it online form.
I'll second the motion to vote on the item.
Okay, great, yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you for that clarification, everyone. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors.
Are you taking a vote to close the hearing or what are you taking a vote on?
No. We take a vote on the item.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Counselors, Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Axelus?
Yes.
You have a full. All loving yes.
Thank you very much. I would now ask Counselor Snapp, if you would kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-024, and open a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority. Item 2021-024, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $500,000 of community preservation funds for the acquisition of 830 Wakeby Road, on which will be placed an open space recreation conservation restriction to be held by Barnstable Land Trust.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second rationale.
I would like to read in the rationale and then turn it over to Lindsey Counsel and Janet Milkman.
Thank you.
Markell's Town Manager. At the August 17, 2020, Community Preservation Committee meeting, the eight members present voted unanimously by roll call vote to recommend to the Town Council through the Town Manager, the Town of Barnstable amended request for $500,000 in community preservation, open space, and recreation funds for the acquisition of the open space resources consisting of 15.74 acres located at 830 Wakeby Road, Marston Mills. The amended CPC application for the larger amount of $500,000 represents a portion of the total purchase price of $525,680. The Barnstable Land Trust will hold the conservation restriction on the property and is contributing $25,680 in both funding and in-kind contribution. The town had sought but did not receive an award of a reimbursement land grant from the state for matching funds in the amount of $250,000. Since the first read of the council order on October 15, the town and the Barnstable Land Trust have redirected a drinking water grant application to this property. Only one application per grant cycle is allowed for this source of funding assistance. If awarded, the grant award would be returned to the Community Preservation Fund. The CPC has requested that the conservation restriction reflecting the Barnstable Land Trust as the holder and other usual conditions be reviewed and approved by the Barnstable Legal Department. This land acquisition would satisfy many Town Planning and Community Preservation Act goals, as well as the town's Open Space Plan related to scenic and natural resource protection, as well as passive recreation. Partnership with the Barnstable Land Trust and leveraging the drinking water grant creates an advantageous cost-benefit value for the town and the Barnstable Land Trust. Lindsey or Janet?
Thank you.
Yes, I had something to say, if you can hear me, Paul.
Oh, I can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Yes, well, thank you. I did want to make a brief comment on these conservation restrictions. These are really a great document and it is important that we have them for tonight's meeting. But they are a great overview of the criteria for these projects and the reasons we choose these properties and the explanations for the valuable resources we're protecting. So they're really good documents to read of, particularly the first five or six pages, where really contains their allowed uses and the prohibited uses. So people have a clear understanding of what we're requiring and partnering with the Barnstable Land Trust to manage here. And they've done a great job of protecting lands and keeping us appraised of these types of things. And it still shows that open spaces are still of great value for the town. And it is critically important to acquire lands like this, particularly where they have a potential to be used for drinking water or water supply protection, really top-of-the-list items. So thank you for considering this, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Lindsey. Good to hear you. Janet, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, again, very briefly. And Sarah, if you could show the first. Yes, again, very briefly. And Sarah, if you could show the first map, we'll look at where this is. This is really right on the Sandwich line. And you can see that the property, which is outlined in red, it's another nearly sixteen acre property, just like the previous one, is contiguous with the three hundred acre Santuit Pond Preserve, which is both in Barnstable and Mashpee. So again, it's expanding an existing conservation area and wildlife corridor. And on the Sandwich side, if you look at the two smaller green parcels sort of in the northwest of the red outline, those are actually conservation parcels owned by the town of Sandwich and we are working with Sandwich on the adjacent property, which is in Sandwich, not Barnstable. So this will even extend further than what you see on the map there. We can go to the next, the next map. It's, this property is entirely within the zone of contribution to the water supply, in this case, the center of Osceville Marston's Mills. So really important for water protection. It also has wetlands, former boglands, a vernal pool, really lovely walking trails. And the historic Five Mile Line, which probably no one has ever heard of, I hadn't until I ran into it. It's a line that goes from Sandy Neck all the way down to Wakeby Road. And there's actually a marker there at the end where the three towns come together. So that's another cool thing about it. It directly supports the goals of the Open Space Plan and the state conservation goals, as well as Lindsey was saying. And as a CPC-funded project, requires a conservation restriction which Barnstable Land Trust has agreed to hold. And I think there's one more photo with, which just shows a photo of the walking trail there. Again, really lovely wide trails. And I think that's it.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very, very much. We've now opened this to public hearing. Sarah or Lynn, do we have anyone for public hearing on this item?
There's no one for the public on Zoom.
There's no public comment via phone.
Thank you both. Hearing none, we will close public hearing on this item. And I will look for comments from the councilors, comments, questions. Counselor Schnapp.
Mr. President, and thank you Janet and Lindsey for your presentation tonight. This is a lovely little parcel on the corner of Marston's Mills and preserving it not only for its natural state, but for the drinking water possibilities in the future, I think is a very wise move for the town council. And I know that the town council did receive a couple of letters of support for this parcel, even though nobody actually spoke to it tonight.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to take a vote to approve the item number twenty twenty-one dash zero two four. Again, this is an appropriation transfer order as a necessity of a majority vote on the part of the total council for seven votes minimum.
Second.
Have a first and we have a second. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, councilors. I would ask.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you to our wonderful guests. Thank you for your great work to Lindsey and to Janet. David, thank you for your help on that, Town Manager. Thank you. Well done. Counselors, I would direct you to page forty-eight now in your agenda for the evening. And I would, I would ask, again, because we are lacking certification, I would ask Councilor Neri to please read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero two nine, and that you would please open and continue to a public hearing at our next meeting, which is December third. Councilor Neri, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am fast-forwarding on this thing. Here we go. Okay. All right. This is old business to be referred to a public hearing. It's item number twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-nine. It's the allocation of a tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, using the tax factor as it's written.
Thank you very much.
And that's a referral to a public hearing on December third, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
So the motion is to open and continue the matter to a public hearing?
Yes. Open and continue public hearing matter. Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, this is a vote to approve, to open and continue the matter to a public hearing on December third.
Counselors. Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Counselor Stein Hilber to please read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three zero, to be opened and continued to a public hearing on December third.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open and continue to a public hearing on December third. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three zero, allocation of tax levy fiscal year twenty twenty-one, residential exemption as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Again, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call to continue this matter to a public hearing on December third of item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three zero.
Counselors. Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask our Councilor Lebec to kindly, on the new business now, we're going to new business, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three six, to read that into the orders of the day. And this is to refer to a public hearing on December third, twenty twenty. Councilor Lebec, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business referred to public hearing as was stated on twelve, the third of December, two thousand twenty. This is item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three six, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars in open space recreational community preservation funds for the increased cost of the construction of ten new dedicated pickleball courts and two tennis courts with pickleball overlay lines located at seven sixty Osterville, West Barnstable Road, Marston's Mills, Massachusetts, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, this is to refer to a public hearing on December third. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three six, if you would please, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Councilor Lebec, you just made a lot of people happy in this town with reading this, that item. Thank you. Councilor Lebec, I'd also ask you to refer it to a public hearing on twelve, December third. Item number twenty twenty-one zero three seven, if you'd kindly read that into the orders of the day.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business referred to public hearing on the third of December, two thousand twenty. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three seven, appropriation order in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the evaluation of gentrification improvements at the water pollution control facility as written.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Again, this is to refer to a public hearing of December third. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three seven. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark? Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Councilor Clark to kindly read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three eight, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Agenda item number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight. This is new business may be acted upon by roll call majority. This is a transfer order of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars from the town council's operating reserve fund to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Marina Enterprise Fund, operating capital budget for the purpose of funding the pier repairs at Bismarck Park Marina.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Thank you very, very much. I would ask, who would like to read this?
Director Lawson is here with us this evening. I'll ask him to read in the summary.
Excellent. Thank you, Derek, for being with us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Consulor. Derek Lawson, Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, a commercial fishing vessel damaged a fixed pier while exiting a transient slip at Bismarck Park Marina. The vessel damaged the end of the fixed pier, rendering two slips unusable, as well as causing a hazard to navigation. Funding for this unforeseen expense is being requested from the town council's fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating reserve in the general fund. This will allow for immediate repairs to the facility. The proposed budget for the Marina Enterprise Fund in fiscal year twenty twenty-two will include funds to reimburse the general fund. Recovery of this expense is being pursued through the party that was responsible, as well as their insurance company. The Marina Enterprise Fund did receive three quotes for the repair, with the requested amount being the lowest. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank, thank you very, very much. All councilors are most probably aware that we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar emergency fund that's under the auspices of the town council. And just for these kinds of purposes, we want to do this as an emergency repair. I think delays in repairing it is just going to make the matter worse, so it needs to be repaired. Makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Counselors, questions of Mr. Lawson? Councilor Neri, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Director Lawson. I assume should insurance prevail in some fashion and that those funds would then be reapplied to the to the operating reserve fund.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to take a vote on this item.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first?
I think you can just, you can just call the vote, Mr. President.
Okay, so we'll take a vote now, please, on item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three eight. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors. Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Councilor Clark to kindly read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three nine, please.
Yes, President Hebert. Item number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine. This is new business may be acted upon by roll call majority. Transfer order in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred forty dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Department of Public Works operating budget for salaries to fiscal year twenty twenty-one Licensing Department operating budget for salary.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any comments, questions by the councilors?
I think Director.
Rationale. Mark Els, I'm here to give a rationale and Director Scally is also here with me for any details. This was a result of a stat, as you know, licensing is one of our smaller departments, the loss of a staff member there and the limited budget we have associated with that small number of staff, you know, resulted in a staff member being out on FMLA, needing to replace that staff member with another and then backfilling the other position, resulting in an incurance of cost of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. In looking at this, we had, we rather than ask for a transfer from reserves, we looked at our existing operating budgets within the department and found that our Department of Public Works has salary savings and therefore are recommending that we transfer from those salary savings from Public Works to Licensing, therefore no operating budget increase to cover those additional costs that we incurred during this COVID situation. We ask for your support of this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scally, did you want to speak on this?
I think Manager Els covered it completely. We had a person that filled in that position in the Ways and Measures Division and was able to cover the position from July through October, and she'll be here till the end of December. And you know, as you know, with all of our different renewals and credits we've been given, our license fees, we've had a number of changes because of COVID, including the outside dining process as well. So the person filling in did a great job and we were very appreciative of her helping out while our other staff member was out.
Thank you very much. Any questions to Mr. Scally or to Town Manager from the councilors? If not, I will call for a vote on item number twenty twenty-one dash zero three nine.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Councilor Bogan if you'd kindly read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero four zero.
Item twenty twenty-one dash zero four zero, item of new business may be acted upon upon roll call majority. Is a reaffirmation of the town's grant of an easement to Vineyard Wind LLC and a portion of Cobles Beach as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Rationale, please.
Good evening. Karen Ober, Town Attorney. The town council previously voted to grant an easement in Cobles Beach to Vineyard Wind LLC in October, two thousand and eighteen. The grant of the easement was to take effect upon the recording of an instrument after the effective date of the enactment of Article ninety-seven legislation by the state legislature. The legislature enacted the Article ninety-seven legislation more than six months after the town council vote. Because the land court requires an easement to be recorded within six months of the town council vote, it has become necessary to reaffirm the grant of the easement and reauthorize the town manager to execute. and reauthorize the town manager to execute the easement so that Vineyard Wind may record the easement within the new six-month window of this vote.
Thank you very much. Any comments from councillors? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on item number 2021-040.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, please.
Councillors, Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Councilor Bogan, if you'd kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-041, please.
Item 2021-041 is again an item of new business may be acted upon on a roll call majority. It is authorization for Vineyard Wind LLC to record Chapter 91 license and other licenses and approvals issued to Vineyard, Vineyard Wind as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have first and a second. A rationale, please.
Thank you, Karen Ober, Town Attorney. Vineyard Wind LLC has obtained approvals from the Commonwealth for a Chapter 91 license to install cables from its offshore wind project under Cobles Beach. It has also obtained an Order of Conditions from the Barnstable Conservation Commission and a superseding Order of Conditions from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such cables. Each of these licenses must be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and at the Land Court's Barnstable Registry District. The Land Court requires that an assent from the town dated within six months of the prospective date of recording accompany the documents to be recorded. This assent would authorize such recordings.
Thank you very much. Councillors, any questions regarding this to Attorney Nober? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I would ask for a, take a vote on item number 2021-041.
Second.
Councillors, Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Before I lose Attorney Nober, behind you is a lamp, and unless my eyes are doing tricks on me, the, the light keeps going low to high. Just make sure that that lamp is safe for you.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Either that, or you have a halo that gets brilliant and then gets a little dull and then gets brilliant again, so, okay.
I'll check.
I'll check. Polish it up, right?
I mean, it is Vineyard Wind we're talking about here, energy, yeah, okay. Be safe. Madam Vice President, if you would kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-042, please.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business may be acted upon with a roll call majority vote. Item 2021-042 approving the renaming of the Numar Water Treatment Plant as the Harold E. Toby Filtration Plant. As written.
Thank you very much.
Again.
We have a first and a second. Who's doing the rationale on this?
Director Santos.
Thank you, Director Santos.
Yeah, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. Harold E. Toby, 1936 to 2020, was the first American, African-American officer in the Barnstable Police Department and served the Town of Barnstable as a Town Councillor from 1989 to 2009. He was a member of the Licensing Authority from 1991 to 2001 and a member of the Hyannis Water Board from 2016 to 2018. In addition, he served on numerous boards and committees over his many years of active public service. On June 16th, 2020, the Hyannis Water Board voted unanimously to recommend naming the new treatment plant in his honor, commemorating his tireless efforts over many years to the service of this community. And there is no fiscal impact resulting from this resolve. And I further like to mention that the water treatment plant is fully operational and pumping water to residents of Hyannis.
Thank you very, very much for that rationale and certainly a beautiful, beautiful honor to his great memory. Thank you for doing this. Thank you to the board for deciding on that. Councillors, any comments? Questions? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, I would move that we take a vote on item number 2021-042, please.
Second.
You're muted, Jan.
Thank you. Councillors, Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
With great humility and pleasure, yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Long live Harold Toby, yes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, beautifully done. Thank you. Dan. I would ask Consulor Shaughnessy to kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-043, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is new business, first reading, being referred to a second reading on December 3rd, 2020. This is item number 2021-043. Grant of easement to Vineyard Wind LLC in certain streets and ways, including portions of Craigville Beach Road, Strawberry Hill Road, Will Quocket Lane, Finney's Lane, Attix Lane, and Independence Drive.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. So this is a vote to refer to a second reading, December 3rd, 2020, item number 2021-043. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillors, Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would kindly ask Madam Vice President, please read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-044, please.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business may be acted upon by roll call majority vote. Item 2021-044, adoption of Town Council's Strategic Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 to 2022, as written.
Thank you.
There a second?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much, Consulor. Thank you. We have all received our, we had the drafts, we made comments on the drafts, we've all received the final draft. Any comments anyone would like to make on it? You did a good job, this great strategic plan. Any comments? Councilor Clock, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I did make a comment here that I wish I had seen a marked up version from the consultants that had a little more discussion about who, who had input into what changes. But I also feel, as I did when we had our meeting this past September, that the first page, the guiding principles, have what appears to me inconsistent phrases, whereas many of the guiding principles listed begin the phrase with a verb involving protecting, operating, and then there's four phrases that say the manager's job to manage, manage the staff. Each council member is taken in the betterment of the community, the right to disagree decisions in the best interest of the whole town. So I would suggest that we be consistent with those phrases. As I said back in September, the same thing, that I gave my mark of copy, that those phrases all, all have that same kind of a quote, in the same, in the same phrase.
Okay, so I know you made a request, Consulor, to see who's made comments earlier, and I believe that the Elizabeth that helped put all this together is looking and she can give you the red line of what the things were changed, but she can't give you, you know, who said what and how, you know.
I have the point.
And then in terms of verb following and how we, how it's listed beyond my pay grade, I didn't make much comment on that. Any other councillors want to comment? And Councilor Clock, comment. Okay. Seeing nothing else, I would, I would ask for a vote to, to approve item number 2021-044, the Town Council's Strategic Plan for Fiscal Year 2021.
Second.
Thank you. We have first and a second. Madam Clerk, please. Vote.
Councillors, Clark.
No.
Rob Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
The measurement passes, thank you very much. I would ask Consular Starr to please read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-045.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business may be acted upon tonight by a roll call vote. This is item 2021-045. The adoption of policy to reduce net greenhouse gas emissions.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
So is, is it appropriate to read the res, should we, everybody can read. Should we read the resolution into the record?
I, excuse me, I have a question. Did he refer to it as item 2021 or 2020?
Item 2021-045. Thank you, Nick.
No, isn't, oh, isn't, isn't it item 2020-045?
No.
No, okay. Oh, I see, okay. Oh, no, you know what? I'm sorry, I'm looking.
It's on the agenda page. It's, it lists as 2020, but.
Yeah, it says Scribner, Sarah.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
We're both right.
Thanks.
Good job. Good catch.
What's your pleasure? We could read it in, or you could make some, some comments and a highlight that you want.
I'll just, well, I'll just give a quick rationale. This, this resolution was presented to me as liaison to the Infrastructure and Energy Committee. It had come to them and they voted unanimously to pass it on to the Town Council. It's a, the resolution basically directs the town to look at future planning through the lens of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. The resolution puts us in, you know, in line with the, the State Global Warming Solutions Act. I do agree with Mr. Neary that, that we should be very proud of what the Town of Barnstable has done. We've picked a lot of the, the lower, we've done a lot of work over the last 10, 15 years by DPW and at the sewage plant and everywhere. But we need to keep working at it. And I think this sort of codifies that we're going to look at policy and actions to keep moving forward with this issue. So this, um, so it's a, it's a, it's a climate resolution that's parallel to one that's passed in 11 of the 15 towns on Cape Cod. And I was also just heartfelt by the, all the intergenerational support we had tonight. So I hope people can vote for this. Thank you.
Well, well said. Thank you very much, Consular Starr. Consul Steinheber, please.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, and I'm happy to do a rationale if there's a second. I'll second it in discussion.
Okay, rationale, please.
Okay. So I'm reading through this, and it's titled Adoption of Policy. But in reality, it's a, it's a resolve, so it's not binding in any way. But right off the get-go, it's confusing. Because it does say adoption of policy, and some of the comments that were made seem like there's expectations of a drastic change to policy. So I think this really kind of, the interpretation of this can be very confusing. It is vague. It is redundant, as was mentioned earlier. Some of the language in here, although I know this is a watered-down version, but it's, it's got a dash of ideological language in it. But that's, you know, to be expected. It was, you know, drafted by a political action committee or special interest committee, what, what have you, that's been, you know, pushing this on the Cape. You know, usually resolves a reserve for, you know, very tangible actions like us signing on to the letter in Boston over the FCC language. Or resolves to recognize Cape Cod Independence Day, or to res, or to result, or to recognize Girl Scouts Day like we did last March. But as far as the redundancy, you know, we just passed a strategic plan. And this is our every-two-year collaborative effort that we, we spend a lot of time on. We parse the language, we parse the paragraphs. We work together to come up with a product that all of us are comfortable with. And this, this strategic plan is the document that all decisions, policy decisions, budget dollars, the town manager uses, all of his directors use over the next 48 months, the next two years, two budget cycles, for what our goals are. And, and this, this is what the town is doing. So I just want to highlight a few things in here. Investigate innovative techniques and legislative options to address beach erosion prepared for extreme weather events. Support programs that emphasize environmental protection. Evaluate options for effective and economic development of renewable energy source. Support efforts to build resiliency of the town's natural and built resource. Deployment of energy resources consistent with state targets. Acknowledge climate change, the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by utilizing renewables in accordance with the Global Warming Solutions Act. So this is in our strategic plan. These are our goals. These are our action items, which I feel we should be very proud of, our strategic plan. And I think we should stand behind that strategic plan and not adopt items that are somewhat vague and open to interpretation. So I would encourage my fellow councillors to vote to table this. Not saying yes or no, I'm just sticking behind the work that we did collaboratively, which addresses in a real way, an actionable way, a tangible way, a measurable, measurable way, and a reportable way in our strategic plan. So I would encourage my fellow councillors to consider that and stand behind our strategic plan, which is a very meaningful and collaborative effort. Thank you.
Consular Starr, please.
Thank you, thank you, President Hebert. I think that, that this, this resolution actually strengthens the, the strategic plan. I mean, it, some of it's, some of it's, this is covering the same issues, but it sort of puts it in one place and makes it, makes it clearer. I don't, I don't quite understand what Mr. Steinheber said when he said it's a watered-down version from, I don't know what, but, um, so I think we should vote on it, but thank you.
Thank you, Consulor. Consul Neary, please.
Thank you. And, and just as a.
And just as a follow up, I know, I know I had some comments following public comment, but it's interesting, I was highlighting similar, similar things to our strategic plan. A couple that you missed are, one of the big ones, I think, is part of town infrastructure and assets is evaluate options for effective and economic development of renewable energy resources, energy conservation programs, and solid waste and recycling programs. It's just that this is something I think that, that we've been living. I think it's been something that, that the town staff has been, the town manager in particular, and certainly Director Santos and the operations of the town, what they do. I understand the, the passion and, and the, the the public's comments on this, but again, I think this is just, this is, uh, this is a little bit feel good, frankly, in, in, I do always fear of, of erring on the side of when, when we're talking about adopting policy. I mean, the last, if you read the, the last, well, sentence and a half is the town manager is hereby directed in consultation with officers and departments of the town to identify and recommend town council. Those words can be interpreted. And, and when you get into interpretation like this, again, I'm not sure it's our position as a council to, frankly, like micromanage, get in the way. I mean, we task them with our strategic plan perform based on, you know, what we've laid out in the strategic plan. And I just, to me, when you get into interpretation, then you can, it can bring up concerns and comments down the road of, you know, why did we do this or didn't do that in terms of the, the managers of the town? When, at least my opinion is, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that, you know, from everything that I've seen in my short tenure, that, that they take all of these, these items into account when they make a decision with not only the assets of the town, but, but the, the, the money that they're, you know, that they've got to figure out how to spend it on the particular projects that we have. So again, it's, it's, it's not that, that this adoption of policy or this resolve is incorrect. I just think it's, lack of a better word, it's redundant. It's what we're doing. And I just, I, I do, I do fear interpretation down the road can lead to, I don't want to call it pushback, but let's just say some hurdles that, that, that will place the management of the town in, in some, you know, situations that are really unnecessary and, and unwarranted. And again, that's just my opinion, but, but I do, I do, you know, value the opinions of what we heard. I mean, they're passionate. Everybody has a, something that's near and dear to them. Unfortunately, we've got people in the staff that I think take all of those concerns, you know, truly deeply at heart.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Vice President, please. Jessica, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I can't, I know we're discussing tabling the item. I, I wonder if perhaps taking the word policy out of the resolve and simply putting in, keeping objective only. So, you know, perhaps that might be less of a, a clear policy directive by the council to the manager. But after what I've heard from the public, especially the youth, I think the council should be setting an example and, and given opportunity to clarify our position on, on reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. So that's just a suggestion, a thought on that.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm sorry, Counselor Steinheuber, please.
To kind of follow on to that, perhaps there is a view that this strengthens the strategic plan, but by that logic, then we should do a resolve on every single item in the strategic plan. Because I would think we'd want all facets of the strategic plan to be strong. And then following up on Vice President Grab Crissetti's comment, perhaps tabling this and rewriting it so that it reflects exactly what's already in the strategic plan. If you're trying to highlight something, perhaps that's a better way to go, to eliminate confusion. Just my two comments on those.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Bob. Counselor Snap, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think sometimes we need to reach. And I think the urgency of what is being presented to us tonight is something that we should not ignore. It does not take away from all the efforts our town has done to date. The commitment of our staff to try to reduce energy consumption wherever possible and to meet efficiency standards. But, you know, net zero is a fairly challenging goal to reach. And for us to kind of put our, our, our vote behind it, I think is, is a large statement. Our strategic plan, yes, is a document that, you know, we just approved and we follow, but I think we can amplify some of the things that we have in there by a resolve that we feel is an important one to consider. So tonight I would urge my fellow counselors that we don't table it and that we vote. And maybe we're not going to have a unanimous vote, but I think we should move forward and get the consensus of the council tonight.
Counselor Levesque, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think some of the concern here too, and, and talking to some, some constituents in regards to this. And again, there, there's definitely a sense of urgency. I don't think anybody in this Zoom meeting wants to live underwater in the next hundred years, nor wants to live in anybody's trash. And so, you know, the, the sense of urgency is there. Climate change is happening. Of course, there's debates on exactly what's causing climate change, but the, the thing, climate change is happening. So to do anything to try to effectively prevent that from happening should be something that we are pursuing. That being said, if we adopt something like this, I guess my question is, and I'm not quite sure who can answer this question or, is that it's a little ambiguous. So somebody could read that and perceive that to be, well, you know what? In six months, I'm going to want to see a workshop on the effects of, you know, that we should outlaw gas powered lawnmowers in the Town of Barnstable. And all our DPW and all our groundskeeping and structures and grounds and for the school department and things of that nature, no more lawnmowers because that gives off greenhouse gases. And, and is that party going to want to hear a voice? And is this council, because we adopt something like this, going to have to entertain that? Not to say that it's not valid. All I'm saying is that it, it could start a domino effect of different causes. You know, leaf blowers, hedge clippers, you know, landscapers, the, again, at the town level or even, you know, contractors. And, and now we're talking about the trades, you know, builders not using, be able to use compressors. Everything's going to have to be electric. And that's happened in other towns in the Commonwealth where they've, you know, basically outlawed and any gas powered tools in construction. Everything has to be electric. Now, I've had conversations with my, I've had conversations with friends at Eversource who, you know, work with electricity. And, you know, the, the cause and effect of, you know, outlawing these types of uses of, of gas power. And again, this is greenhouse gas emitting machines, utilities, and instead replacing electricity. And the people at the power plant will tell you, well, that's great, you know, that's good for us because we get more business, but we use fossil fuel to create that electricity. So in the end, it's not really helping the situation as far as creating greenhouse gases. It sounds good. It looks good on paper and it looks like you're trying to be effective, but in the end, it's really not reducing what we're, it's not effective. So until we get the amount of renewable energy, and that's really, I think that's the focus, is a renewable energy in place, the infrastructure in place, things like wind, things of that nature that we can switch over to, is then that's when we can increase our electricity without emitting more greenhouse gas. So there's a cause and effect here that's happening if we adopt. Now, maybe, you know, Town Manager Ellis, you have more, and again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you have more experience with renewable energy and the history of that in this town than anybody in the Zoom meeting. Is, is, is that a concern? That that might be something that the council, if we adopt something like this, the council will be hearing on a, you know, a, a regular basis, I should, as it could say?
Counselors, thank you. These are all good points, but it is now 10:57. I hate to ask you this, but we need to take a vote if we want to go past 11 o'clock. We have another one very important item to do, so I'd ask you permission in your vote of whether we want to go past 11 o'clock.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and exceed our meeting past 11.
Thank you. Have a first or second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, please.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheuber.
Yes.
Assless.
That's me, yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. To continue on, I think that Counselor Levesque was, I believe, asking Town Manager Ellis to weigh in.
Well, it's a town council policy that you're adopting here. So the ball's in your court as to how you look to this to be administered. Once adopted, I am, I, I, I take every resolve, directive, I take everything that the council puts forth as guidance or rule for me seriously. So I'm going to sit down with staff and I am going to understand, I'm going to identify and recommend to the council measures that may be taken by the town to facilitate this policy and these objectives. So yes, we will engage. We do have guidance, as has been shared by, by your fellow counselors, that we do build into our current programs, but this policy will raise it another level.
Thank you very much.
If I could follow up, Counselor. So again, that, that would be my, you know, I guess fear is that, you know, anybody could come in and even though it's not timely, and there's really no other resource for us to have. And again, when, when we're talking about trades, I mean, the backbone of a lot of, you know, and, and this is what, again, I'm just trying to see how, if we adopt something like this, how it's going to play out moving forward. We can't just, you know, make, you know what? I'm going to take it as we're not adopting something that's a feel good legislature. We're going to build something that's going to actually be effective, right? Because we don't want feel good. And that's what we're trying to avoid is, and, and I understand what Counselor Neary appreciate. But if, if this is going to be effective and going to do what it says, then that, I think that's how it's going to play out. It's not going to be very, in, it could be hurt business in the very immediate future and there may not be a quick enough remedy. So we could start taking things away that we're not, we don't have replacement for. And we're talking trades, we're talking some of our lower income immigrant population. You know, this is a threat to them if, if, if we start playing these, some of these things of preventing gas. I'm, again, maybe I'm overreacting and Counselor Starr, please, I was just going to ask you, and I have your hand up. Please, in, in respect, if you can help me with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to start, I think Jim, Jim Wolfe from Cape Air said it best tonight. He said that their business, as soon as they adopted the whole idea of sustainability, they didn't know where they were going. But every step they've taken to move towards sustainability has saved the money along the way. So it's, so that the path isn't, isn't, if it was written down, it'd be great, but we're not sure what the path is. But even the, the governor in April signed a letter that said formally that the state of Massachusetts is going to get to net zero by the year 2050. So we have to get there by the year 2050. So we have to work now and do what we can as the, you know, as Mr. Ellis and his staff find possibilities. We need to, to work on those and connect them to each other and keep them moving forward. I never, I didn't really think I would hear tonight that we would say that there, there's still a debate on what the causes of climate change are. But we'll leave that there. So I think, I think we just need to move forward and, and there's, and vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Starr. Counselor Steinheuber, please.
Again, in our strategic plan, we talk about aligning with state target. So that's there. But again, now we're hearing more that, you know, this, this really involves a little bit more careful. Look, this wasn't written by staff. This wasn't written by council. This is an outside group. You know, it was on our agenda two days ago. We're just looking at it at 11 o'clock at night. But this may have, you know, repercussions that we're not entirely thinking through. And, and I think, again, tabling it, tweaking the language on this so that we're comfortable with it. I'm happy to work with Counselor Starr on it and, and move forward in a, in a way that we're a little bit more sure of what we're actually putting our vote to.
Thank you, Counselor Steinheuber. So Counselor Starr, if, I'm just throwing this out, and Counselor Shaughnessy wants to speak next. But I think that they're all bringing up valid points. The strategic plan was for us as a council. Wasn't about feel good, it's about what we feel we had to do, what's the right thing to do. And the strategic plan is a well thought out, very, very good plan. I understand and appreciate every counselor's comments of, in terms of the, the way that this resolve is written. Counselor Starr, if you would consider the coming back and even Counselor Steinheuber offers to work with you so that the resolve, the resolve is for those kids that we saw tonight. The resolve is that they know that we're going to put a backbone into it. Without getting into specifics, I would think that the resolve is for the kids and for the next generation. That's just my thought. But I just want to throw that out. Counselor Shaughnessy, and then back to Counselor Starr.
Thank you, President Hebert. Can I just say on behalf of our children who spoke tonight, who endorse this, I think it is insulting and patronizing to them to term this as feel good, to say that this is vague, to say that this is a cause that's just near and dear to some people. This is going to affect everybody. You know, as I pointed out, this was something that became near and dear to me as a 14 year old. I don't even know anymore, 40 years ago. So, and I've seen nothing done in my lifetime. In fact, I went on to see the oil and gas industry pump out SUVs. Those became the latest, greatest thing. In that time, I've seen little to no money put into renewable technology to the point that we're still struggling with it in 2020. I do not think, and I think it was Jane who pointed out tonight, that the way that this is written, it's not vague. It's written broadly and loosely. So to say things such as zero to the extent technically and economically feasible. Again, this is not micromanaging. This is not vague. To say that the town manager is directed in consultation with the officers and departments, his staff, to identify and simply make recommendations to the council. Again, I don't think this is micromanaging. I don't think this is vague. I'm sorry, but I'm going to stand up for the kids who spoke tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Back, back to Counselor Starr and to Counselor Levesque. Thank you.
Just, just one quick comment about, about this resolution that it, this resolution has been over the town manager's desk and into legal. Just one quick comment about this resolution that it, this resolution has been over the town manager's desk and into legal. And they had their, they changed it so that it fit to the town, what the town needed it to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Counselor Levesque, please.
And thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. And I appreciate your passion for the children. I share that passion with you. In no way, shape, or form did, I don't think I said that it was vague or anything like that. Again, I was just trying to see the absolute, like, what is the danger of it? You know what I mean? And I was just throwing a question out there to see if there was any or if that was anybody else's concern. So in no way, shape, or form, and I don't know if you were accusing me of doing that, but in no way, shape, or form were I's. I didn't take what they had to say seriously. I thought it was great that those kids were there. I thought they were very articulate and spoke very well. And, you know, I'm glad to see the future, getting involved and taking, you know, environment seriously. So I appreciate your passion and your gratefulness for the children. And just to, just to be able to clarify that, I was just, you know, trying to filter out any other, you know, concerns that might have been. And again, things that were brought up to me by constituents in the town. And to go ahead and comment, I'm not questioning why climate change exists. Again, we represent a, not just our own agendas, but everybody in this town's opinions. It's not just our own personal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Levesque. Counselor Bogan, please.
I have to agree with Counselors Shaughnessy, Schnep, and Starr here. This is an instance where we're setting a policy saying what the town of Barnstable stands for with regard to our renewable and clean energy efforts and efforts to stop climate change. What I think we're hearing now is a philosophical difference. My recollection is that when we did have the strategic planning meeting, Counselor Starr put forth something with regard to the Green Communities Act then. Different initiative, but the same ilk. There was resistance to even that. So I think that even if you table it, there's going to be a dichotomy of views. I think we need to call the question and vote on the motion.
So is that a first?
You make the motion? I think, I think.
I'll make the motion to vote on the, or I'll call.
Well, Counselor Steinheilber made the motion to table it.
I say I vote on the motion.
I really think it's a motion to postpone indefinitely because you've all debated it and that's what's debatable. But in any event, he's made the motion. So is there a second?
During conversation, I basically amended my motion to work with Counselor Starr as a sponsor to maybe clean up the language on it, align it more with our strategic plan, and have it be a little bit more precise. Not saying no to it, trying to align it with our strategic plan. And a lot of the folks that spoke to it tonight, I can assure you, have no idea of the things that's in our strategic plan. So it's not insulting to anyone. I have kids myself, so to say I'm insulting children is kind of beyond the pale. But the definition of vague also is broad and loose. So you've proven my point. But I want to clean up this language. So I'll amend my motion to table it and work with the sponsor to tighten up the language. There's a little more meaningful pop to it and aligns with our strategic plan. That's all I'm looking to do.
Okay, so.
That motion needs to be seconded?
It needs to be seconded, yes.
Second.
Okay.
That's a call to vote.
Could you restate the?
Yeah, please. Counselor Steinheilber, could you restate it, please?
Yeah, it's a motion to table, to work with the sponsor, to tighten up the language, to make it a little bit more meaningful and clear and align it with our strategic plan.
And there was a second?
Okay, so now we're.
I think you need to take a vote on that.
We'd like to take a vote on that motion. Madam Clerk, if we could take a vote on Counselor Steinheilber's motion.
Counselors. Hebert.
Let's pass, please.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
No.
Shaughnessy.
No.
Starr.
No.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Aztless.
Yes.
Bogan.
No.
Clark.
No.
Rob Corsetti.
No.
Hebert.
No.
Four yes, seven no. Tales.
So, Mr. President.
Yes.
We can continue to discuss the item as presented, amend the item, or simply vote on it?
What would be the role of the council?
Make a motion and bring it to a vote, please.
Second.
Second.
Mr. President, do you want to just ask if there's any further debate?
Yes. So what we have right now is a motion to take the vote rather than have much more discussion.
Well, Mr. President, if you ask if there's any further debate and then hearing none, then you can ask for, excuse me, you can ask for the motion. You can, you can take the vote because you already have the motion and the second.
Okay, all right. So.
But if there is further debate, then you need a motion to call, then someone needs to call the question.
Okay. So is there an appetite for more debate? See, none? I would entertain.
Then you can just take the vote.
Take the vote, okay. Seeing no more conversation, Madam Clerk, take the vote. Now, this vote is for the approval of the resolve.
Yes.
Okay? And it actually has a, an item number, which is 2021-045. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
No.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
No.
Aztless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Nine yes, two no. Neary.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselors. Good debate, good conversation. Well thought. Thank you. I would now ask Counselor Levesque to read into the orders of day, item number 2021-046, please.
Yes, this is new business, the first reading, refer to a second reading, 3rd of December 2020. Item number 2021-046. Town council has resolved to appoint the following individuals to multi-member board, committee, or commission licensing authority. Aaron Webb is a regular member to a term expiring June 2022. And recreational commission, recreation commission, George Bent as a regular member to a term expiring June of 2022, replacing our newest town councillor Nick Aztless in his, thank you for your service on the recommission as well.
My pleasure.
Second.
So we have a first and a second. And we do thank our appointments board for all your hard work at keeping our candidates in all of our committees and commissions full with members. Thank you very much for your hard work there, Counselor Levesque, Counselor Steinheilber, and your team there. Okay, so we have, do we have a first and a second? Do we have a first and a second?
Yes.
Okay. And any, any comments? Okay. Well, it came, motion for, to take a vote, please, Madam Clerk, on item number 2921. Oh, I had a mistake. It's 2021-046 from the appointments committee. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Aztless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
11, yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselors, thank you very, very much. I would ask you to please look at your calendars and also think about whether you want to move, push for that, the December 10th special meeting. And that would be strictly on the finances, the options for financing the comprehensive wastewater plan. Or if your preference is to go to the 17th, and that's the last meeting of the year, and spend, you know, the two hours was probably in that conversation with questions and answers in the presentation. Or if you want to delay to another, another time. A town manager said that even if, you know, we went first meeting, I'm sorry, town manager, comment?
Oh, it's okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to reinforce what you're saying. We expect to have, Director Mellon is working on a document similar to the general funded policy document we provided you prior to those reviews for fiscal policy relevant to our comprehensive wastewater management plan. We expect to have that to you before the December 3rd meeting. We've asked leadership to spend an hour during that meeting on December 3rd on this issue, and then a subsequent two hours. So I'll turn it back to you, Paul, that those subsequent two hours are in the hopes that we can get closure on some, and very, very optimistically, all of these policy issues. But if we don't, then we would continue to a future meeting the first of next year. Thank you.
And I have, town manager has verified that in no way are we delaying anything that's crucial. He knows that if he asks for an emergency meeting, we will, we will certainly help. So things are still in development. And so they're pushing to get the presentation on schedule. My only concern with not going with the December 10th is because of Counselor Schnep's work with the zoning. And so if you decide, if Counselor Schnep decides that another night would not throw the public off or give any negative feeling of delay, then the 10th remains a good, open option. But I'd like to hear from the counselors.
Well, that was my wedding anniversary, so I was willing to be here. I think we can move a committee meeting. Come on now.
Are we having a party there?
Yeah, with 10 and a half people.
Okay. So.
I think the discussion of wastewater is a priority. So if we need to move the committee meeting, that's fine.
One of the reasons I held off a little bit is if one or two other counselors, if Eric said that he's, you know, the wedding party, the anniversary party.
All right, I will be here on the 10th if we have a meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay, so as early as possible, we'll let everybody know what the decision there is, sort of, then. Okay. Thank you very, very much. So our next regularly scheduled meeting is December 3rd. And I think we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, this would be a final roll call for the evening. Thank you.
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Aztless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Rob Corsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
11, yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Please be careful going home, specifically to staff that are in the building with us tonight. Thank you all for your participation. Wonderful, wonderful participation. Thank you so much.
Have a great night. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you. Yeah.
Bye-bye. Thank you.